First, 2021 Barnstable Town Council meeting, no joke. And in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting? And if so, to please make us present's known. Do like to make a note that all the councilors are participating remotely in tonight's meeting. And without further ado, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilors, Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rob Crisetti.
Present.
Kebert.
Present.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Star.
Here.
Don Hilber.
Here.
I have 13.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And if we could all stand now and recite the pledge, if you can mute your microphones, and Council Bogan is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Council Bogan. Just before our moment of silence, I would like to recognize and remember a very important citizen of the town of Barnstable, in particular, the village of Marston's Mills. And just recognize the passing of Lena Childs, who is a native Cape Codder and a beloved resident of Marston's Mills. She passed away on March 27, 2021, at the age of 97. She was a graduate of Barnstable High School, where she earned the Hinkle Girls Sportsmanship Trophy in 1940. When the boys went too far, as Lena used to say, she went to war, excuse me, as Lena used to say, she went to work driving military vehicles at Camp Edwards. She married Braddock William Childs on January 18, 1948. Her love Billy predeceased her in 1975. Together, they built their family home in the mills, established BW Childs Tree Service, and worked their cranberry bogs. She was an avid golfer and a member of the Holly Ridge and Old Barnstable Fairgrounds golf courses, where she was a super senior club champion, a lifelong member of Marston's Mills Community Church. Lena had a strong faith and joined singing in the choir and was an active member of the church community. Lena's love for her family was unconditional. She is survived by her daughters, Mary Marie Pamenta and her husband Skip of Texas, Jill Goan, and her husband John of Chatham, Jane Lacasse, and her husband John of Marston's Mills. She also leaves her six grandchildren and four great grandchildren. And just like to remember Lena Childs, who is also affectionately known as Graham. Just a quick story, when they were redoing the Marston's Mills Village, Graham lives right on Levels Lane there, and they were doing some work. And it was about, I want to say it was probably early March of last year. And they were going to shut the power off due to do the work on the poles. And I knew that it was a cold day and it would be gone, power would be gone, and therefore, her heat wasn't going to work. And so, I remember checking in on her and asking if everything was okay. And she says, "Oh, I'm just fine. I just dress warm." She goes, "I usually have the heat at this temperature anyway to save money." So she was a hot ticket. And I'm glad to, I've said that I got to know her a little bit. I'll miss seeing her on the Christmas scrolls and Village Day. So just if, of course, if you please join me in a moment of silence, not only for Graham, but for all those other thoughts and prayers that you might have this evening. Thank you. I bless Graham and family. With that being said, I'd like to, back to Sarah. And Sarah, do we like to open up public comment? Do you have anybody for public comment?
Yes, we do. Okay, first up for public comment, we have Matthew Greenberg. Matthew, you have three minutes.
Welcome, Mr. Greenberg.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So my name is Matthew Greenberg, and I'm a full-time educator and a part-time resident of the town of Barnstable. And I'm firmly opposed to the proposed development at 35 Scudder. When I look at this incredible 40-acre parcel, I see an opportunity to create something the town of Hyannis lacks: a vast tract of open space with educational and walking trails great for kids, accessible to older people and the disabled. I imagine components for teaching, all of us, about the Cape and the essential waterways that are literally the bloodstream and skeletal system of our fragile environment. I picture a large, beautiful communal forum with demonstration gardens to teach us about pollinating plants and sustainable native species. We have such an opportunity here, and I urge the town to rally all local conservation and land trust groups to work with the resort to preserve this land for community use. What a gift this would be to downtown Hyannis and nearby neighborhoods starved for green space. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg.
Next up, we have Megan Newman. Megan, you have three minutes.
Thanks so much. I am Megan Newman, and I'm here again to give my strong opposition to the proposed development at 35 Scudder. The density and scale of this proposed apartment complex exceeds the carrying capacity for the site, will worsen traffic problems, and will completely disrupt the residential feel of the surrounding neighborhoods. This 40-acre parcel should be preserved as a community green space with walking, education, and nature trails, which are in woefully short supply in Hyannis. This is a perfect opportunity to link the pocket park at the old golf station with the much larger parcel, expanding existing open space for the entire community's enjoyment. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bettina. Bettina, you have three minutes. Please unmute.
Hi, thank you. I'm Bettina Abe, and thanks for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate all of your service to the community. My husband George and I own 83 Edge Hill Road. I believe that 35 Scudder Ave., Hyannis must be protected for human and environmental health. There are demographics that are key. The environmental justice communities surround this particular parcel on three sides. And these demographics are key in setting priorities and allocating resources for urban green space, passive wreck facilities, and other programs. The Hyannis Youth and Community Center is only 0.7 miles away, a 15-minute walk to 35 Scudder Ave. It's a perfect location for a public park. As an existing golf course, conversion of this parcel into a destination for families with baby carriages, bikes, folks with disabilities, and seniors would be straightforward and relatively inexpensive. The open space allows for rainfall absorption, groundwater recharge, carbon sequestration, and cleaner air. ADA trails could be installed, winding their way through and around the area, dotted with picnic tables. This parcel is a perfect candidate for our Mass. Division of Conservation Services, Mass. EOEA Land and Park Grants, which fund public parks and EJ communities. Leverage for these grants could include donations of specimen trees and labels by community members. Gardener groups could partner with landscapers to create pollinator gardens, supporting threatened bees and butterflies. The OSRP section, Barnstable's OS Open Space and Wreck Plan, Section 7.1.5, Opportunities for Agriculture States, preserving land for farmlands was identified as very important or important to 75% of the community survey respondents. And at the residential level, the benefit of community gardening should be expanded to allow opportunities for community garden plots in each village and particularly near environmental justice communities. The 2018 Barnstable Open Space and Wreck Plan states again and again the threats to public water because of pollution. This parcel is 0.5 miles from a significant wellhead. The last thing this area needs environmentally are more impervious surfaces, such as rooftops, roads, and driveways. Connecting the proposed dwellings to sewer and engineering stormwater pipes is not an environmental solution. Instead, town leaders should facilitate creating housing by redevelopment, not by developing critical open space. Developing this parcel would be adding insult to injury after severe environmental damage that Stewart's Creek has suffered. Parcel at 35 Scudder is just above the flood zone. Risk assessments have been included, among other things, that sea level around Barnstable could rise as much as five to six feet by the end of the century, and weather conditions and storm surge potential could become more severe, page 45 of the Open Space and Wreck Plan. Barnstable's comprehensive plan, according to it, more than a quarter of Cape Cod salt marshes are located in Barnstable. Salt marshes are among the most productive ecosystems on the planet. In addition to providing vital aquatic and wildlife habitat, salt marshes filter pollutants, buffer shorelines from storm surge.
Ms. Abe, could you please wrap it up?
Yes. So I'm just asking you to please engage the public, allow us to fundraise, and save this critical parcel for a public park. Once you allow its development, it'll be gone forever. And thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Abe.
Next for public comment is Alan Granby. Alan, you have three minutes. You just need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Well, great. I don't think a lot of you people know me. My wife Janice and I live at 91 Harbor Road in Hyannis, the side of the old South Hyannis Lighthouse. We've been at this location for 35 years and living on Cape Cod for over 40. Just to give you a quick background, I either have served on the board, board advisor to the Alliance to Protect Nantucket Sound, the Cahoon Museum at Kewett, the Cultural Center in Bass River, most recently, the Heritage Museum and Gardens, and have a huge commitment to the culture and environment of Cape Cod. The... This project seems very similar to the one that's been built in the industrial park where it's well-suited. 40 acres of open space. If that's taken away, it's like taking Central Park away from New York. As we all know, our environment is extremely fragile, particularly our water. Our sewer systems are failing. And I know there's been an enormous work given by our various town committees and offices. We all love Cape Cod. But to take away that space or open space and in its place, having to create variances for enormously sized buildings and hard services, it's not what we came to Cape Cod for. It's not why our families move here. We're into a new world. And I think what we need are very hard and very talented town offices and officers doing is trying to figure out how to preserve these 40 acres as open space, not to give variances. We've had enormous increases in taxes to build an appropriate fire station to provide medical and fire services to this community. We've had to build an enormous addition to our hospital, and now, in larger addition to our hospital, the police are stretched. And to increase our population at that enormous size is going to put a lot of pressure on the town services, which is already stretched. I really can't imagine how we could even consider the applicability of this project.
Mr. Granby, could you please wrap it up?
Yes. Thank you for listening. And it's your responsibility, and we voted for you all, and we're proud of you all. And do the right thing. Help these people find another place for this project.
Thank you.
Hi. Next for public comment is Tina Carey. Tina, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I have some sewer questions. Is this a good time to do that, or am I supposed to wait for some sewer meeting?
Well, we don't have back and forth, as you well know, Ms. Carey, of a comment.
All right.
We're not necessarily going to go back and forth. You might have a response.
All right. My sewer comment is, why is there a double fee? $17,000 for each building on your property when there's only one pipe going to your property? Why is there just not a connection fee for the second cottage? And why are they double feing that? The other question is, how can the increase of water to the sewage treatment plant be calculated when we have nowhere for the effluent to go? They've been looking for an effluent site for 28 years, and as far as I know, they haven't found one. And that's why the CLF is suing the town, because the effluent from the sewage treatment plant is polluting Lewis Bay and Stewart's Creek, since the levels in Stewart's Creek have tripled since they went on town sewer. So the lawsuit that has been filed clearly states that the source of pollution is coming from the Barnstable Sewage Treatment Plant into Lewis Bay, and Lewis Bay is all sewered, and so is Stewart's Creek. So I mean, this is kind of a common sense thing. I just don't know why anybody can't answer the questions. And has anybody pursued the licensing of permits for an outfall pipe? I suggested this back in 2011, that they needed an outfall pipe because there is nowhere for the effluent to go. And why you keep voting to give them more money for sewer-ing when we have no place for effluent is just beyond comprehension. The other question is, who repairs the pumps and replaces them when they break down? And are they ejection pumps, or are they grinder pumps? Because there is a difference. And why is Mashby having an override vote for their sewer increases and where not? The other thing is, does the town have a National Pollution Elimination Discharge System Permit, which is known as an NPDES, to even do what they're doing with the sewer plant, expanding it? Do they even have the permit in place? Because they do not have a MEEP permit. So I just don't know why we're spending millions of dollars and we don't even know if the permits are in place or not. I think that's something the council should be looking into. So I think that's about it. Oh, the other thing is closing Main Street this summer with the barriers. I think it's a very bad idea. We're losing half of our parking, which is the most precious commodity we have in downtown Hyannis.
Ms. Carey, you'll need to wrap it up, please.
Okay. The traffic was backed up through Route 28 in Yarmouth. And that is the whole reason why Main Street Hyannis went to a two-way, one-way street, was because back in the 70s, they used to switch the roads back and forth every year. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Next for public comment is Ann Roland. Ann, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me this evening. As you said, my name is Ann Roland, and I've been a resident of Barnstable for 35 years. I am here tonight to voice strong opposition to the proposed apartment development at 35 Scudder Avenue. This overscaled complex will destroy the character of Greenwood neighborhood. Developing this property, and it's, people are saying it's developed. I've played on Twin Brooks. It is a rustic, low-key, R3 course. There is very little development. Fails to address a large need in Hyannis, namely preservation of open space for quiet enjoyment and recreation. However, I do agree, we need housing. We need housing in this whole town at various levels. Couldn't we get this site development group and find a place where it would be much less destructive for our roadways? Mainly, you know, somebody, Tina Carey just mentioned it, West Main, Main Street, Western Rotary, Greenwood, and breaking up this beautiful piece of property, because once it's broken up, it'll stay broken up. Much less, a gated community in Hyannis, it's an oxymoron. It should be soundly rejected. How off-putting to have a large gated operation right in the middle of Hyannis. It's not particularly welcoming. Now, the amount of blacktop that's proposed in the site plan in itself is wholly disqualifying. The heightened density of the project is really overreaching. So can't we all come together with the developers and find a good site for this project and maybe some other projects in a much less dense area? Now, I don't know, but a while ago, we had several elementary schools that were empty. And I don't know what's happened to them, but there has to be someplace within this town, you know, Kewett, West Barnstable. We've got a lot of housing in Hyannis. It's dense. And once we lose parking on Main Street, the merchants won't, people will stop stopping by the stores. I used to work in one of the stores on Main Street. And if you couldn't get a quick parking spot, they didn't come in. But, you know, people would come in and go, "Found a spot right across the street, so I thought I'd come in." It's how it works down there.
Ms. Roland, could you please wrap it up?
Absolutely. This 40-acre parcel should be preserved as communal green space with walking and educational trails. Please honor the town commitment to preserve green space. And please, work with the residents and the local land trust and conservation and the resort to help preserve this property. And hopefully, we can all find places for additional housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roland.
Next for public comment is Amanda Converse. Amanda, you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Sarah said, my name is Amanda Converse, and I am a resident of Marston's Mills. I'm also here to talk about housing in the town of Barnstable. But I'm asking that the council act as quickly as possible on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, which I see as a vital component to addressing our current community and economic development needs. I'm speaking as someone who is a small business advocate, who talks to small business owners every day about their struggles. And one of them is finding any housing options for their employees. I'm also speaking as someone who grew up here and came back as a young professional only to find the housing options on the Cape unaffordable, and they didn't fit my needs. And that was 16 years ago, so I'm no longer a young professional, I don't think. But, and I am speaking as someone who will likely need an income stream like this bylaw affords if I'm going to be able to afford to live here in retirement, if I ever get to retire. So we all know there's been a housing issue on the Cape for decades. But this past year has just made it feel so much more pressing and urgent as more people are moving here and the housing market has exploded in price to the point where there are virtually no rentals left. Anyone searching for rental right now would be incredibly depressed at what they find. I have friends every day searching for an apartment, and they can't find one, an apartment or a house. As I said, this is an economic and social issue, and the ADU bylaw would go a long way to alleviating some of the strain that people are feeling. Seven towns on the Cape have already passed a bylaw. It has broad-based support. And so, I'm hoping that the council can move this issue forward in a timely manner. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Converse. If I could just ask, if you've already spoken in public comment, if you could just sign off, it would leave a little more space on the screen so that we can fit as many people as possible in the room. And if you could just watch either live on our website or on Channel 18, that would really be helpful. So if you've already been a part of public comment, if you could sign off, I really appreciate it. Thank you for joining us. Sarah, anybody else?
That is it for public comment at this time?
Excellent. So now, if anybody wants to respond to public comment, any councilors, please. Let me just make sure I'm checking both pages. And again, if you're still with us, if you could sign off, that would be helpful. Thank you. Councilor Axlus.
I just want to comment, Mr. Granby, I do know who you are, Mr. Granby, and I say that with a smile on my face, because I grew up not too far from where you live. So you are familiar to me and appreciate all your commitment and efforts to improving the quality of life here on the Cape, and particularly in the town of Barnstable in Hyannis. I, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments about the Scudder Ave. project. As someone who grew up in Hyannis and still has a lot of family there and family members who have businesses there, I too am concerned about this project on Scudder Ave. Due to its density, the impact it's going to have on the environment, and of course, on infrastructure, traffic issues, and so on. You know, Hyannis, as everyone knows, tends to be the place where everything ends up. And the density there is, you know, it's almost at its breaking point. So I do agree, it would be nice if projects like this, or even ones that are smaller, could be located elsewhere. Maybe some of the burden can be put on the other villages in town and have some other opportunities. As it relates to Ms. Carey's comment about the barriers on Main Street, she brings up a valid point. With the traffic jams that we had last summer, you know, the only way people are getting down to Main Street, they're not walking there. They're not, they don't, they're not able to walk there until they actually drive there. So if people can't get down to Main Street because of the traffic, and they avoid it altogether, it's going to cut down on the number of customers that are going to be doing business in the establishments there on Main Street. So last season, it was a necessary function. I believe that with COVID being in a different state than it was a year ago, there should be some consideration about the traffic issues and how it has, did in fact, keep many customers away from Main Street. So, and on top of the fact, they were probably the ugliest barriers ever seen on Main Street. Hopefully, they'll look better if they do in fact, end up there again this year. Those are just my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilor Axlus. Councilor Cullum, please.
Yes, can I ask a question? Who came to the agreement for the boundaries on, I'm sorry, the barriers on Main Street to make it one way, one lane? Does anybody know? Does maybe the town manager could answer that?
Congresswoman Dills?
I know we have Elizabeth Jenkins out there, who has interacted consistently throughout the process. Elizabeth? Can you answer that one?
I can. Good evening. Elizabeth Jenkins, Planning and Development Director, Town of Barnstable. Our position on the barrier so far is that we are still in listening mode and taking community input on the barrier configuration. We all know it's very, very hard to plan in a time of change and uncertainty. And certainly, in this moment, as we all hope for a safe and prosperous summer, we also have to plan for health and safety as well and for the inevitability that people are likely going to want to be more outside. Since the barriers came down in November, we have been speaking with members of the Hyannis Main Street Business Community about the opportunities and the challenges those presented, and also letting them know that more than likely, we would at least be making plans to roll them out. And also letting them know that more than likely, we would at least be making plans to roll them out this season. So we've had a number of, again, a number of meetings and communications with the bid and bid and merchants on the street. Overwhelmingly, they've been supportive of putting the barriers back down. We know that the restaurants are looking forward to the opportunity for outdoor dining and a number of them have made plans to enhance their space this summer. We've also pursued a number of grant opportunities to be able to look at improving the aesthetic of those barriers. So ultimately it's the town manager that, that makes that approval. But again, we have been communicating with the business community. We have modified, proposed to modify the barrier layout. That's on the street to add more parking because that was really the primary concern that we heard last year was that, that we wanted more on-street parking. So we've proposed a modified barrier layout that allows for more parking. And those are the plans that we've presented to the community to date and we could still continue to accept their feedback.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there were, the stakeholders were, were included there. Thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Just to, to add to that as well, thank you, Elizabeth. And Elizabeth and staff, Public Works, Police, did an incredible job last year to quickly organize and to provide opportunities both to keep Main Street open, for the merchants to have more space and for the general public to be able to come there safely during the challenges that we had over the last 12 months. I spent a lot of time on Main Street and I spend a lot of time speaking to my fellow residents of Barnstable. And I will just share with you, my experience is that the majority of people were thankful that though we, we perhaps could have improved the looks of the barriers. I did say to Elizabeth and company that I wasn't going to do anything unsafe and floppy. Plastic barriers would not cut it with me. They went out and they found the best they could on very short notice. And in the end, it worked safely, functionally. And as we progressed through the season, not only did I get to speak with our residents and businesses, but our visitors. And many people had never come to Main Street before and had heard while they were on Cape Cod that Main Street Hyannis was open for business and came there. So yes, there was additional traffic and yes, those barriers probably could, if we had had time, been some other more aesthetically pleasing product. But in the end, we helped to keep Main Street Hyannis open, functional and safe. And we'll continue to talk with our businesses and public and try to replicate that as long as we have these challenges. Thank you.
Governor Dells, while we're kind of responding to Ms. Carey's comments, did you want to speak to our Director Santos? Just to curb the amount of misinformation that might be out there in regards to our sewer?
Well, actually, I think they were all good questions. I would state though, before that, if you, since you're asking, and then if Dan wants to back me up, he can, but you know, relative to 35 Scudder, there's no development application before the town at this point. This is private property. I hear the residents and their concern, not the first time they've been concerned about this parcel. And we take it seriously, but there isn't anything formally in front of us yet. So I just think it's important for people to know that. And this is a private parcel. And I think it's important that people know that as well. Relative to the questions about the proposed sewer assessment and then kind of expanding it into broader statements. Relevant to the, the dwelling, the residential dwelling unit, there's three ways to do the assessment. You can do it on dwelling unit, you can do it on frontage, or you can do it on area. In our discussions, we were looking to establish a, a fixed sewer assessment. Frontage and area don't allow you to do that. I mean, think about, think about how many pork chop lots there are versus regular lots. I mean, there's just so many ways to, to, to look at any of these three. Typically based on areas when you have undeveloped land. And so you really don't have an ability to base it on, you know, to, to, to base it on other factors. So you might go that route. We have used the per unit in the past and we recommend that we use it again for the, for, for the equitable reasons that we've stated. Relevant to the question about the NEPTIS permit, we are not required to have a NEPTIS permit. What's happened though is in Maui, there was a, a decision that a wastewater treatment plant that didn't have an outfall pipe, that's when you need to have a NEPTIS permit. And we've talked to DEP and EPA, EPA being the federal, DEP being Massachusetts, about the types of permits we need. We have all the permits that they will issue us that we need to operate our facility. What's happened in Maui though, is there was a decision that a facility that didn't have an outfall pipe, but had an injection well, which basically puts the wastewater down into the ground and then it travels through the ground out into the environment, needed one. Since that decision was made, questions have been arising relevant to other facilities across the country. Our Hyannis one being one of the concerns in the sense that we don't have an injection well, we don't have an outfall pipe. We have a sand filter bed that we release the effluent, the treated wastewater into. Then it goes into the ground, then it travels through the ground and it enters the environment. So that's what's going on there. We have been in conversations with DEP and EPA. If the regulations change, then we are confident we can go out and obtain the permits we need. But at this point, we're not required to have it. We have looked at ocean outfall pipes, but ocean outfall pipe is, and we have looked at it for decades. They do exist in places. They're difficult, if not impossible, because of the ocean sanctuaries permit to, to, to receive approval for. But we continue to look at it as an option because of the challenges we have. Whether it's our onsite septic systems, or whether it's us living or a treatment plant existing on top of our water resources, the ground we live on and what's beneath it, it's a challenge. So we're always going to look at all options, including ocean outfall. It's included in the current comprehensive wastewater management plan as an alternative that we evaluate. And again, we'll continue to look at effluent discharge moving forward. To move forward with phase one of this plan, right now, we have the capacity and the ability to discharge the effluent from that. We are looking at alternatives. We know a decade from now, there'll be another layer of concern with things like emerging contaminants. Cause they're everywhere as well, not just from firefall, from us as well. And, and interestingly enough, I'm a speaker on a panel with, relevant to the steep study that's being done relevant to emerging contaminants. And now on there, we've added information for consumers about these emerging contaminants and the products they buy every day, put on their shelves, using their homes that are contributing to this. So if you want to go onto our website now, you can find all that information. And hopefully our residents will educate them, themselves on this and begin to modify purchasing behavior, quite honestly. Cause otherwise, we're going to be dealing with it at the end of a pipe somewhere. But it's not the plant that creates it, it's us. So I hope that in general answered the questions. But anytime, any questions, please share them with us. And if we don't have this forum, we'll get back to you directly. Those are good questions.
Very good questions. And again, questions that other citizens have. And again, I just, it's important just to consistently tell us some things that maybe all the councils have heard before, but it's important that our public, so that we continually move forward with, and as we move forward and, and seek to advance a comprehensive wastewater management plan, that we don't have any misinformation along the way. Important that we, we can, we continue to move forward and we don't want to take three steps forward and two steps back because of any kind of unanswered questions. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And thank you to the other counselors for, for listening as well and entertaining. Any other counselor, Counselor Hebert, please?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, we certainly appreciate all the comments given by all the residents this evening. Just as a little word on the, putting the Main Street back to, with the, back to what it was last season, then certainly it'd be nice to improve the, the look of the separator there. Obviously, I'm forgetting what, what we call them.
Jersey barriers.
Barriers, thank you so, so much. Thank you. And that'd be great. But all the citizens that I have talked to so far have expressed that they really liked it. I, I for one kept saying how it felt so much festive, the way, you know, we were able to walk down the street a little bit more freely and it slowed down the traffic was the other big comment that, that I heard. But certainly the, I know that the town will continue to talk to the business people and will make a good decision on that. And finally, I am concerned, I know the housing issue is on everybody's mind. And it is really bordering on a crisis at this point. Whether you're trying to buy a house or you're trying to find an apartment, it is truly very, very difficult. We all received today through an email message from Ms. Moore describing both the cost of trying to find an apartment, the lack of, of apartments available, and also the conditions of which some people are living. And it is nothing short of heartbreaking to read her message. So I know that we all are going to work as hard as we can to use all the methods that we can to increase the availability of affordable, decent housing for everybody. Again, thank you for the comments of everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Any other comment, Counselor Rep. Seti, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in response to the residents concerned about that project at 35 Scudder Ave. You know, thousands of acres have been purchased on, on Cape Cod through grants, through county grants, through land bank. And within our local community, Barnstable Land Trust has secured, I would say, you know, thousands of acres or at least hundreds of acres. So I know too that the state has the local acquisitions of natural diversity grant program called land program and their, their round is open. Unfortunately, their maximum amount that they distribute is $400,000. But my suggestion to the residents concerned about that would be to form a, a group and make overtures to the owner, as Manager L said, it is privately owned. And so I would put together a group and perhaps see if you can make contact with Barnstable Land Trust to see if they can help you with approaching the owner and seeing if, if it's possible to raise money to acquire it, perhaps through conservation and make it a conservation piece. So, you know, we do have them throughout the town. And I know there are, in, in my precinct, you know, the Crocker neck conservation prevented housing development from going in there. So I think if you, if it starts at the ground roots level, you could be successful if the developers open, or if the property owners open to something like that. So there are avenues, but it takes grassroots efforts. And I'm sure there's a lot of resources available for that endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rep. Seti. Counselor Colm, please.
Sorry, I just have one more thing to add. That was great advice, Counselor Rep. Seti. And I know that we have a very committed group over on, on, by 35 Scudder there on Greenwood that are really looking for advice and, and guidance on that. So don't be surprised if they reach out for a little bit more, since you seem to have a lot, a lot of training in it. But, you know, it's a pressing issue, absolutely. It is important to note, as our town manager said, that there is no formal application in front of us now. But keep your eyes peeled for the county and what's going on at the Cape Cod Commission with, with regards to this project. And make sure your voices are heard clearly there. It also is really inspiring that people from around the town and not just the budding neighbors are concerned about it. And I love the fact that we're looking at housing regionally and it's not just meant to be the burden on, on Hyannis all the time. So that's that. And then the other thing, I just wanted to make one quick, one quick correction. Mr. Granby spoke about our sewer system failing and I want to make sure that it's clear that it's not our sewer system that's failing. It's people's personal septic's Title V systems that are, are causing the problems, not the sewers. And I just think it's really important that we identify things correctly by the right words as we're moving forward so that it isn't in the paper that the sewers are failing. That's not what's going on because we're trying to sewer as we know. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Colm. Any other counsel comments? Page two here? All right. Not seeing everybody. Okay, good. Excellent. Thank you, everybody, for your response to public comment. And moving into town manager communications, town manager Mark Ellis, please.
Good evening and thank you. This is the town manager update for the period of March 18th through April 1st. I'll begin with asking Assistant Town Manager Clyburn to review two subjects. The first being an update relevant to COVID vaccination efforts in Barnstable. And the second, providing an update relevant to the rental property database implementation project. Assistant Town Manager?
Good evening, Mr. President, town counselors. I'm Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager, here to give you two updates. First, I'll be reporting on our COVID vaccinations. Second, I will share information on the Barnstable rental registration program. Both of these initiatives reside in our Health Division. At this time, I'd like to, to take the time to recognize Tamara Fro. While not zooming with us tonight, Tamara is watching on channel 18. The reason for the recognition is to showcase our local talents and the interconnectedness of our town department. Tamara began working for the town as a gateway greeter. An extremely successful program that utilizes bright, talented people to serve as ambassadors during our high tourism. Just a few months ago, Tamara was hired into our Health Division, where she works as our rental registration program. As you likely realize, the Health Division has been working with a all hands on deck attitude. From contact tracing to vaccinations, the staff have been stretched beyond their limits. During the most recent uptick in infection, we were truly faced with a crisis in how to connect with our immigrant community, gain their trust and provide them safe testing and vaccinations. Tamara, our most junior member of the Health Division, speaks Portuguese and Spanish. Tamara's efforts in outreach, scheduling, administration of testing and vaccinations cannot be quantified or appreciated enough. There are lots of folks in town, schools, partner agencies, and those out in the community that have come together to address the current situation. But tonight, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank Tamara publicly for her efforts. Thank you, Tamara. As you all know, the initial vaccination rollout was particularly rough for our senior citizens to navigate. Once the Cape Cod Vaccination Consortium was established, we pushed hard for all of our seniors to provide their information to us through our council on aging. We then forwarded that information to Cape Cod Healthcare for those folks unable to secure appointments through other means. The feedback from our seniors on their experience has been overwhelmingly positive and our vaccination rate has climbed to the highest in the state. You may also have seen that despite our high vaccination rate, our infection numbers continue to rise. How is this possible? How do you have the best vaccination rate in the state and the highest infection rate? The simple answer is that we're vaccinated according to the mandates imposed by the state. Unfortunately, this current outbreak generated within a segment of the community who were not vaccine eligible. With this knowledge and the understanding, we quickly shifted gears in order to bring resources as quickly as possible within state guidelines. Through our partnership with DTH and the schools, we've been able to provide additional testing. In fact, over the past two weeks, free testing has been provided at the Melody Tent on Sunday and at our schools. Superintendent Mayo, Brown and Hirstaff have been phenomenal in getting the word out. In total, over 1,300 people have been tested and that does not include what was done as recently as today at the schools. Our efforts have extended beyond Barnstable. We've offered help to other budding communities on Cape as well. They've been encouraged to use any and all of our initiatives and platforms to test and vaccinate within their community. Further, should these towns lack the capacity to collect information, including in Spanish and Portuguese, we've offered all of our flyers, ads, and as the information comes in, we will share it with Cape Cod Health. As of today, we're 10 days into the current vaccine eligibility. We've been successful in gathering information on individuals requesting assistance on securing a vaccine using the same approach that we did with our senior citizens. using the same approach that we did with our senior citizens. The outreach has been particularly productive in our immigrant population. Many are being vaccinated in an aggressive rate. More vaccine is flowing to the Cape, and we are undoubtedly turning the corner on taking the fight to the same benefit. So as you just heard, while we're certainly facing a challenging situation, there is also a promising pattern of success. So before I move on to the rental property compliance efforts, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on vaccinations.
Any council questions?
Nice job.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Vice President Shep?
Yes, very impressive, the way that our entire town has really rallied, not only to serve those who are immediately eligible, but really seeking out those populations that might not come forward. Are we primarily just using the Pfizer and Moderna, or are there any uses of the J&amp;J vaccine in town?
Yeah, we have seen all three, not necessarily as part of the consortium with the town Cape Cod Healthcare and the county. That consortium has really turned into a vaccination machine. All three vaccines are coming in, and it's very promising. The numbers are rapidly increasing. I really think we're going to turn the corner in the short order. You know, supply is going to issue today, but we're definitely seeing a turnaround.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Star, please.
I think, thank you, President Levesque. Mr. Clyburn, I had a question. Is it possible to test for variants? Or is that just too complicated?
Absolutely. And unfortunately, like I said, the DTH has been down pretty remarkable to get 13. The uptick, when the superintendent called me less than two weeks ago, since that time, they've been here at least five times and tested 1,300 and clearly testing for the variants has been part of DTH's protocol.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Star. I would just like to add too that, yeah, indeed, thank you for recognizing Tamara. She really was serendipitous, really, for coming on, hearing the story of how, and then just really raising her hand and making herself available in that way. And I've witnessed Tamara in action and what she's been able to do, the phone calls that she makes, communicating with people, and just the care that she goes about, the business is remarkable. And also too, I wouldn't miss, I appreciate Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn recognizing other people, but I also want to take time to recognize, and we don't always do that, but Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn and his ability to really kind of think outside the box. And really has been extraordinary in regards to reaching out to the community, especially the underrepresented and included population, and really working towards reaching out to them. And I just also like to thank Mike Messinas and everybody over at the HealthMinistryUSA.org organization, what they've been doing, Alice Poposa, and other people, pastors in the community, and everybody trying to build trust, reaching those, again, that need to be helped and that have been able to do that with their help. So again, kudos to Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn for building that trust with that public community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, there's certainly more people than we can possibly thank.
Correct.
Recently today, we had Tom firefighters, Hyannis firefighters out doing homebound. And not to talk about the schools would be completely useless. I mean, they have been phenomenal in their ability to reach out to those communities. They're translators. None of the outreach that we've done and getting probably over 1,000 in that community vaccinated within the first week of eligibility, it wouldn't have happened without.
Yeah, that cheap burn, cheap win. Again, so many.
All right, I'll move on to the second topic that Manager L has asked me to address, which is the host compliance, rental property database implementation project. We have contracted with a company for host compliance services that will enable the following. Online rental registration, a 24/7 complaint hotline, and online monitoring to identify rentals not properly registered within the project. All of these services will be helpful in a variety of ways. One of which will allow our inspectional services department to shift from a purely complaint-based posture to a more active enforcement stand. Overall, we believe this service will provide for better life safety out in our neighborhoods and provide the ability to capture data that will inform future decisions with regard to any new or updated regulation proposals. To provide a quick update on the schedule, let me share that February and March were spent largely with the contractor working with her IT and assessing department. Assessing records were compiled and formatted in order to transfer into the host compliance system. At this time, the contractor is actively working to build out our online registration system with all of our data and forms. During this phase, staff training will also be conducted and the site will be tested. Our goal is to go live with the registration and hotline by June 1st. Our Health Division, as I mentioned earlier, is straight out with the all-hands-on-deck approach with COVID. But while COVID testing and vaccinations on the forefront, we know that the rental registration process is also falling into place, and it won't be put on the backboard. Despite the fact the Health Division is honed in on COVID, I want to assure you that we're optimistic that the host compliance system will roll out soon. So I haven't answered any questions on that now as well.
I just have a quick question. How do we get the information out of you guys at the hotline?
It'll be pushed out widely.
Thank you.
Obviously, the system needs to be up and running. A hotline out there without the system in place to notify registries. We looked into it, but.
Councilor Absolus, please.
Thank you. Assistant Manager Clyburn, if I missed it, I apologize. When will this be live?
Our goal is one June.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Clark, did you have any hand up? Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions, comments, for your guys, the short-term rental registration issue? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue with Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Mark Ellis.
Thank you. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. On Monday, March 29th, the Cape Cod Vet Center hosted the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Ceremony in the parking lot at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. And due to the ongoing public health emergency, the event was held as a drive-through. Cape Cod Vet Center Director Dr. Jocelyn Howard and her staff were joined by State Rep Diggs, Wayland Exaros, Town Council President Matt Levesque, and members of the public. They came to honor and salute our region's Vietnam vets and thanked them for their service and sacrifice. Thank you. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY22 as scheduled. We commence public hearings on the proposed FY22 capital improvement program this evening. We have completed final internal review of the proposed FY22 operating budget. On Tuesday, March 30th, at 10:00 a.m., the Town Manager I held the fiscal year rate hearings. And the proposed fee changes are in the areas of water supply, water pollution control, and solid waste. The Town Manager fee hearing has been closed, and proposed fees have been taken under advisement at this time. We had stated that we will have a 30-day period of review and then either approve or approve or modify the proposed rate. We are planning to present a level service budget in FY22, including restoration of resources that we reduced in FY21. The proposed FY22 operating budget shall be provided to Town Council on May 11th, 2020, I'm sorry, 2021, 2022, with a first read of the appropriation order on May 20th. The public hearings commence on June 3rd. I have the same script as correction on all of those dates. The school committee will be voting on the Barnstable Public School FY22 operating budget on Wednesday, April 7th of 2021. Upon approval of the Barnstable Public School budget, they will submit that budget to the Town Manager for inclusion in the proposed municipal operating budget. So I just bring that April 7th date to your attention so that you can certainly view that and hear what will be coming forward in our operating budget. I apologize for those miswritten dates that are on there. I think my computer grabbed 2022 for some reason. The town of Barnstable has led the region's efforts to protect and preserve our water resources. And with recent state approval of its comprehensive wastewater management plan, which is a 30-year plan focused on protecting the health of coastal, inland, and drinking water quality. And we embark on perhaps the most aggressive infrastructure and resource protection plan in the history of our community. We engaged our community in the next phase of the plan involving the review of fiscal policy to support and implement the CWMP. The fiscal policy under consideration would establish how to equitably distribute the remaining cost of the CWMP. The Town Manager's proposal to the Town Council included the following. It was a two-step approach. First, review and approve the proposed sewer assessment ordinance, which includes a sewer assessment to each individual property receiving the planned sewer expansion. And then second, a discussion of use of general funds to pay for the remaining portion of the cost associated with proceeding with the CWMP. And within that recommendation, I recommended to the council that they consider a debt exclusion vote. The town has stressed the importance of community engagement in the development and implementation of the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, including the proposed sewer ordinance. Public engagement sessions to discuss the proposed sewer assessment ordinance were held on February 25th at 10:00, 2:00, and 7:00 p.m., and again on March 25th at 2:00 and 7:00 p.m. Unfortunately, our 10:00 a.m. had technical difficulties, so we weren't able to run that particular version of the session. The sessions were publicized in the local media via social media, by email, and e-news, sent directly to civic association and other community groups and also individuals, shown on Channel 18 as well. The virtual engagement sessions were conducted via Zoom as a webinar and streamlined on Facebook and aired live on Channel 18 and streamlined on, streamed live on the town's website. We had hundreds of citizens participate in the live sessions via Zoom and Facebook and many other viewed live on Channel 18. The sessions were recorded and posted to the website, and to date, there have been thousands of viewings of those five presentations. We have compiled all questions and comments. We have responded to all questions received and are in the final stages of preparing a frequently asked questions update. We have one now, but we're going to update it reflecting those commonly asked questions and the respective responses that we shared, that we will share with Town Council and we will post on our website. We are awaiting some additional input from our business community on the proposed sewer assessment method of calculating a business unit, not a residential dwelling unit, but a business unit. Therefore, I've delayed submission of a final proposed sewer assessment ordinance for a first read until April 15th, 2021. Town Council leadership has scheduled a workshop at a special Town Council meeting on April 29th, 2021, commencing at 6:00 p.m. to review and discuss the proposed sewer assessment ordinance. So the April 15th is a hard date. We won't go any further than that. We will submit it for a first read. Barnstable Water Resources website is available. I give you the link, and it provides access to the current news and information relevant to the CWMP and these implementation efforts. As a reminder, the property owners, they can use the property lookup tool to find out whether their property is included in one of the three sewer expansion phases. An introductory video has been added to the homepage to introduce users to the site and explain where they can find information. The site provides access to primary documents such as the CWMP, the draft sewer ordinance, as well as summaries of these and other materials. Site visitors are encouraged to sign up for the new Community Current e-news, which will be distributed electronically to provide regular updates on the CWMP, construction schedules, Town Council meetings and hearings, and other pertinent news. And will keep you advised as we progress on this important effort. The Planning Department, in collaboration with the Department of Public Works in pursuing the opportunity to become a complete street community. The National Complete Street Coalition was launched in 2004, and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation established funding for complete streets in 2014. Complete Street Project improvements improve the quality of life for communities by providing safe and accessible options for all travel modes, including walking, biking, transit, and vehicles, and for people of all ages and abilities. A draft complete street policy has been prepared and is under internal review. The policy reflects Barnstable's commitment to incorporate complete streets design principles whenever feasible, based on factors such as cost, current and future need, proximity to scenic, historic, and environmental features. We plan to bring the complete street policy to the Town Council for approval. It does require Town Council approval, most likely in a resolve. I need to just review that again with staff, specifically Karen Nova. Once approved by Town Council, then it goes to Mass DOT for approval. Then the town can apply for technical assistance grant. The town can receive up to $400,000 annually for construction funding once all approvals are received. It's a great opportunity to continue to prioritize and enhance safety, comfort, accessibility, and sustainability within our community. And I want to thank Kate Maldonado, our senior planner in planning and development, Griffin Bowden from our town engineer, and Paul Graves, our senior project manager, for their efforts on this complete streets program. And we'll keep the council and the public advised as we progress on this. We continue with regular conversations with Vineyard Wind regarding the status of Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects. Vineyard Wind continues to work with the Barnstable staff regarding both phases of the project. They anticipate commencing construction in 2021 and proceeding with permitting for Phase 2. We anticipate going out to bid for sewer construction in April 21, with construction commencing in the fall of 21. That would coincide with the construction Vineyard Wind will be doing with their project. And we have continued our discussions with Vineyard Wind regarding a host agreement for a potential Phase 3. And Nate Mayo was in here a couple of council meetings ago, giving you an update on those efforts. They will continue to be available for updates as needed. At the annual Massachusetts Recreations and Park Association Conference last week, Assistant Recreation Director John Gleason was presented with the Community Professional of the Year Award in recognition of his commitment to improving our community and dedication to enhancing recreational programming to find new opportunities to engage our youth. We congratulate John on a well-deserved honor. During the conference's keynote address, Christine Stratton, President of the National Recreation and Parks Association, gave special mention to the Barnstable Recreation Division for their ongoing efforts to ensure our youth continue to have access to safe and quality program during the public health crisis and highlighted some noteworthy accomplishments, including utilization of program staff as beach safety officers last summer to ensure a safe environment for beachgoers, the development of the remote learning program to support local families, and for their assistance with the family tables, collaborative weekly food distribution at the HYCC. Great job, staff. Thank you. Exceeded all expectations. That concludes the Town Manager's update. I'll take any questions. And then our Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown will provide an update on Barnstable Public Schools.
Thank you, Town Manager L. Any questions, comments to Town Manager L? Councilor Clark?
Good question. Thank you very much for that report. Regarding this information for the CWMP and the sign-up for Community Currents, is that all on the link, the water resources link on the homepage?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council clerk. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any. Let's move on to Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown, please. Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown? There we are.
Good evening, Mr. President and town councilors. I'm going to share my screen. Town Manager Els asked me to come on this evening and provide you with an update in terms of specifically focusing on our transition to full-time in-person learning. Before I get into that, I just wanted to highlight our rationale for shifting to remote last week. As I'm sure councilors know, we needed to move into our remote model for instruction. This is a result of the surge that we saw in COVID cases. I'm sharing on the screen here, these are the COVID, this graph to the right represents the number of cases we were seeing in our schools. That doesn't mean that the cases were transmitted in our schools. It's we received notification of positive cases. So over the last two weeks, we were notified of 93 students who tested positive for COVID, 25 staff members, and that ranges from educators to cafeteria workers to paraprofessionals just across the board. And we had 21 students who were in Cohort D, which is our fully remote cohort, also tested positive. So given the spike that's represented on the graph and in consultation with our district physician, Dr. Katie Redman, as well as Tom McKeon, we decided to shift to our remote learning model for a period of time. As we made that shift, I was in contact with Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, as well as the Department of Public Health and the Commissioner of Education, and requested the state's mobile testing unit to come to the district. That testing unit came, the, was, our tests were administered by Fallon. On March 23rd, 216 of our students and staff were tested at Barnesville High School. We used the fieldhouse for all the mobile testing that's been conducted over the past week or so. They returned on March 25th, at which time we were remote, so we opened up testing to any Barnesville Public School staff member, student, family members. We didn't turn anyone away who came for testing on Thursday, March 25th. As a result of that, we had over 520 individuals tested. Out of that pool of testing, there were 20 positive tests. Again, not necessarily connected within school, could have been a family member that came to the testing site. I'm going to back up and say on March 23rd, out of 216 that were tested, and again, those were Barnesville High School students and staff, there were three positive cases. And on March 30th this week, we had 117 student athletes tested. That was a strategy we were using so we could return athletes to practicing and games this week sooner rather than later. And today, we had another opportunity for testing, again, open to the community and 125 or so, and that was as of 5:00 PM today. When I had that number, the testing was closing at 6:00, participated in testing. So we are seeing, as you'll see on the graph, a significant decline in the cases that we've been notified of, and so we're taking a look at our ability to return to school in person on Monday, April 5th. And I've just, while sort of multitasking here, has, have been in touch with Dr. Katie Redman, and earlier, Tom McKeon gave me his recommendation, and I'm pleased to announce, and I will send this notification out tonight to our families, but the decision's just been made, I'm pleased to announce that we will return in person on Monday, April 5th. In terms of returning fully in person, so that's five days a week, the Commissioner of Education has required all districts to return in person. The hybrid model that districts have been using is no longer permitted to count for instructional hours. I think that was his way to leverage many districts to go back into in-person instruction. There were, there were close to half of the students in Massachusetts, I think I said this last time, have not seen the inside of a classroom since March 2020. We've been very fortunate in Barnesville Public Schools that we opened up in person in the fall, although we had to have a hybrid model in many of our schools to maintain the CDC recommendation of six feet of physical distancing. So as we now are transitioning to five full days of in-person learning, I just want to walk through our different grade spans. So our K-3 schools, and we have five of those kindergarten through third-grade schools, High West, BCIS, Centerville, West Villages, and BWB, we're adding Wednesday to their schedule, beginning next Wednesday. So students in these elementary schools already attend four days a week for in-person learning, and we're adding the fifth day beginning next Wednesday. So all students have the opportunity for five in-person days beginning next week at our K through three schools. When we look at Barnstable United Elementary, again, that's our building that houses all our fourth and fifth grade students, that's one of the buildings that we had to go with a hybrid model because we cannot physically fit all students in our enrollment at BUE and maintain six feet of physical distancing. We're reducing that physical distancing down to three feet. That's been the World Health Organization's recommendation since the summer, which was not the CDC's recommendation of six feet. The state has been pretty clear on that three feet has, is deemed to be a safe, a safe amount of space for physically distancing, particularly in schools among students. So we will drop down to three feet of physical distancing at Barnesville United Elementary. That's going to parent about 20 students per class when we do that. So we will merge our cohorts A, B, and C, and they will start attending BUE five days per week, beginning Monday, April 26th. They were scheduled to begin this Monday, this coming Monday, on April 5th. However, given the cases that have occurred at BUE, the commissioner is aware that we're going to stay in the hybrid model for the week of April 5th and April 12th. The following week is April School Vacation Week, so when students come back from school vacation, they will be five days fully in person. Very similar circumstances at Barnstable Intermediate School. We're going to need to reduce physical distancing to three feet. We will merge cohorts A, B, and C. They, all students will have the opportunity to attend five days per week in person. Should say Cohort D is our, is, is what we call our students who are 100% remote. Cohort D students may remain fully remote throughout the rest of the school year, and that applies to all grade levels. At Barnesville Intermediate School, beginning Monday, April 26th, all students will have the opportunity to go in person five days a week. At the high school, yesterday, we picked the date, and when we will return all high school students, the commissioner had said he would notify school districts rather than wait. We've decided to go ahead and pick a date, and we're not waiting for his guidance. I don't think he would pick a date sooner than May 3rd. I feel like we're pretty safe with that date. So on May 3rd, we'll return, cohorts A, B, and C will merge, they'll attend the high school five days per week at that time. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown. Any, any questions, quick questions for Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Superintendent Mayo Brown. This is really more a matter of curiosity. It seemed like you seemed to be coalescing around the April 26th date, but then you got to the high school and the May 3rd. What was the thinking there?
So the thinking there was, the commissioner, when he issued his mandate to school districts, he said, so high schools will return at a date to be determined, that he would give districts at least two weeks' notification for a high school return date. We just felt that that was, you know, sort of, just asking everyone to sort of wait for a date that was uncertain. We'd rather pick a date for our students. I think that's, date is a week post when we bring back BUE and BIS. So I think we get those two schools particularly settled and then focus on reopening to full in-person instruction at the high school.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cullen, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. Can you give us some, thank you for the presentation, and I'm happy that one day they're going back. It's hard on everybody, as, as everybody knows, I guess, but can you give me an idea of how many teachers have been vaccinated at this point?
I really would have no idea. We're just starting to collect that information on a voluntary basis. My sense is, is that particularly because when we've made appointments available or that teachers had, and school staff, I think all of those, I feel pretty confident saying all of our staff members who want a vaccine have had the opportunity to receive one, either through the consortium, through, there was an opportunity where Stephanie Ellis notified all, notified me that there were additional vaccines at K-Pod Community College one day. So we had over 200 staff members who participated in that day on very short notice. We just got folks to the community college to be vaccinated, and based on that experience for that day, we, we got everybody through that had indicated they wanted a vaccine on that day. So that's why I'm thinking all those who have wanted a vaccine have had the opportunity to receive one.
I was shocked to see that so many educators had tested positive for COVID. Was it 25, I think I saw on your slide?
Yes.
Yeah. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cullen. Good question. Council staff.
Good evening, Ms. Brown. I'm wondering, in the K through three, are there's, is there sort of a parallel Cohort D? Are any of those students getting remote learning still after next Monday?
Yes, so their Cohort D runs K through 12. And we have about 950 students who are enrolled in Cohort D. We've given our families the opportunity to switch. You can come out of Cohort D and come fully in person with us, or vice versa. You can leave in person and go to Cohort D, especially for the families that might be concerned that we're reducing that physical distancing down to three feet. So we're making those adjustments now. It's not huge one way or the other. It's, I would, it's almost a wash in many cases.
So, follow-up. So if I'm teaching third grade, am I being videotaped the whole day? Is that streaming what I'm doing all day?
In Cohort D, it's a separate, we have a separate group of teachers and educators doing Cohort D. They're not in the classroom. There are times when our students who are in-person learning need to quarantine, and in those situations, the teacher will turn on the camera and provide instruction that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Matt, I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raising your hand. I'm just kidding.
You can't.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say to the superintendent, you know, thank you for your presentation, and with all the challenges you, you face, how well are we doing in accommodating our special needs students and those who have, you know, the IEPs who require somewhat of a, an assistant, a one-on-one person to go with them to their, when they're, they are learning, either online or in person?
So those assistants are available in person. They're also available online. We know learning occurs best when in person, so at times when we've been remote, we always have a separate conversation, is it possible, while we're remote, to bring in our students with, with significant learning disabilities so that they can be in person while we're remote? We weren't able to do that this time around, given the surge that we are experiencing. But to your question, the, the paraprofessionals and teachers assistants are present in the in-person classrooms as well as the online environment.
Okay. And if a parent's having a problem, who do they contact?
They should contact.
Fault about it, sorry.
They should contact their building principal as the starting point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good work.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Absless, please.
Superintendent Brown, so you mentioned that there are staff and teachers that have wanted to get the vaccine have. Are you finding that there are staff, administrators, so on, that do not want to get the vaccine?
I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. And I think that concludes the town manager communications. If I could have Vice President Schnep, if we could act on the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the March 18th town council meeting.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Check page two. Not seeing any. Town Clerk, Karen Murphy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilors, Absless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Dar.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Thirteen, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Now, let's take a moment for our council communications for officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Council clerk, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. I just would like to put in a plug for this coming Saturday's Household Hazardous Waste Collection brochure. Oh, backwards. The brochures are on the town's website, under Public Works and Transfer Station. So it's this coming Saturday, April 3rd, from 9:00 to 12:00. It's the first of four opportunities in the town of Barnstable. The rest of that information is on the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Council clerk. Very important, thank you. Any other announcements? I would actually like to take this time, and I know I've reached out to all the councilors. Councilor Schnep and I have been working together since the beginning of the year and talking about, you know, our committees, in particular, our ad hoc and our presidential committees, along with our town staff, and just watching carefully and moving forward on our priorities, setting our priorities, and, you know, we've talked in depth in regards to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, and now moving forward with our local comprehensive plan, we believe it is, it's time to sunset our ad hoc and presidential committees. We're not going to do it necessarily right away, right away. What we've done, what we've decided to do, and again, communicated with all the councilors, is that we're going to sunset those committees moving forward at the end of this fiscal year, which will be June 30, 2021. And we would expect between now and the meeting in July, that there would be, you know, your kind of wrap-up type of, you know, suggestions and reports from the chairs of those committees, kind of talking about, you know, moving forward, again, what they would recommend and kind of what they've accomplished during their time with the committees. And so those committees would be include our zoning and regulatory committee, our asset management committee, a homeless committee, and the presidential committee, which is the Economic Development Task Force. And so, again, they have been all notified that we're going to be doing that moving forward. The reason for this in general terms is that, you know, there's been change restructuring in staff. Our longtime director of licensing, Richard Scally, has retired, and we've moved the assistant planner, Liz Hartsgrove, into that licensing position, and we've also realigned the licensing position to be under David Anthony, our asset manager, and so that makes that asset management a little bit more robust, so that asset management issues can be addressed, and that Director Anthony has some help and assistance there. But with that movement of strength into a different area, it also lessens, you know, the, the opportunity and the staff on the planning department. So to conserve those resources, because our local comprehensive plan is so important moving forward, and our outreach efforts in regards to that, and keeping track of all the data that we're going to be and our outreach efforts in regards to that, and keeping track of all the data that we're going to be collecting, just thought it was important at this point in time to reserve those resources, kind of circle the wagons a little bit, hit the reset button, because again, we'll be talking about through local comprehensive plan, a lot of these issues that these committees were kind of taking on. And it would also free up some counselor time, how about that? For, to focus, again, on a comprehensive wastewater management plan. Because we are the sales force in regards to moving that forward and also the local comprehensive plan, reaching out to the community, making sure that, as I mentioned in our last meeting, all of our communities, demographics, people groups in our community are reached throughout our villages. And so, we will continue to engage. I've talked to Town Manager Markells. And him and I are going to be moving forward. We've made ourselves available to talk to all the civic associations. So we will be meeting with them, hearing their concerns, again, very valuable assets to our community with our civic associations to be discussing and getting feedback in regards to that. We are here to listen. We do want community involvement. We do want to hear from them, and so that we are making ourselves available and open to those, again, to those committees and, you know, all, all people in our community. So, again, I just wanted to discuss that. Again, thank you for all the councilors for your words of support. And, and again, this is, this is, again, an opportunity to kind of hit the reset button, really in the midst of COVID and concentrate our energies on our priorities moving forward. So, thank you for that. Any other? Council Callum?
Yeah, I just, I would like to just expound on the homelessness committee, if I could, for just a minute. And, and let the Hyannis Civic Association and BID know that I was very much included in the decision to dissolve the committee, and I appreciate that. And the new effort moving forward is actually very exciting. And it revolves around what I consider regional credibility for the problem and the burden that Hyannis and Barnstable has felt with regard to the shelter and, and financing all of the EMS and everything that's related to the homeless problem with the shelter. And so what's happening now is that Hack is going to take the reins under, under the deaf leadership of, of Alisa Magnata. And she's gathered together a group of people, stakeholders, regionally, which is something that I've been looking forward to for a very, very long time, to look at this problem and, and try to solve it from kind of a 30,000-foot view first, and then a Capewide issue. As opposed to being something that's just kind of a simmering pot in, in Hyannis, particularly in Barnstable, in, in larger context. So there's going to be some new faces and some new eyes on the problem. And I'm really excited to continue the discussions toward functional zero homelessness on Cape Cod, but with a broader scope and, and not just the microscopic view of what we're dealing with here in Hyannis. And I think that if we have patience and we let go of kind of the proprietary chip we have on our shoulder in Hyannis, we'll be excited to see what solutions can come down the pike when we broaden our scope a little bit and, and see how we can, and get the, the rising tide to lift all boats. So I'm really excited about that and happy to be a part of the new group moving forward. And so I think it's a really good change for all of us to get out of our silo and, and look for a regional, a regional solution to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Callum. Thank you for your enthusiasm and your willingness to take part in that regionalized effort. Any other comments, announcements? Not seeing any. Before we get into the orders of day, this is the time when we normally take a little break. So why don't we try to make it as close to three minutes as possible? How's that? We take seven. So let's take three and legitimately take five. How's that? So, quick meet, quick break. Thank you. Everybody can just turn their screen on. There we go. I believe we are ready to go. So I am going to take things a little bit out of order. I'm going to do the new business first, just because there's just two small items there. And I would ask Vice President Schnep, if you are ready to go. If you could read item number 2021-134.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to read into the record item of new business that may be acted upon by a roll call majority. Item number 2021-134, acceptance of a fiscal year 2021 cultural district grant in the amount of $7,500 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Cultural District Grant Program for the Barnstable Village Cultural District.
We have a first and a second. And we have Director Jenkins here for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levek. Counselors Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, here to request acceptance of a grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Cultural District Grant Program. The town is eligible for these grants because we have actually two state-designated cultural districts that promote and strengthen the artistic and cultural community and attract a variety of audiences just to participate in our creative economy. This $7,500 grant is for the purpose of funding a series of spring and summer activities designed to attract visitors to the Barnstable Village Cultural District and spotlight its many cultural assets and the merchants who are recovering and rebuilding from the impacts of COVID-19. I'd like to recognize Melissa Hirsch, Melissa Chartrand, I apologize, our Arts and Culture Coordinator, as well as Roberta Miller, Executive Director from the Cape Cod Arts Center, who is our managing partner at the Barnstable Village Cultural District. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Is there any questions or discussion from the councilors? Council Rap Crissetti, please.
Elizabeth, do you know how much we received last year on this grant? Was it, was it more than this?
It was not. I believe this is the second grant opportunity we've seen through the Cultural District Grant Program. I believe the last grant was in the, in the amount of $5,000. I'd have to go back and double-check that. That's just my recollection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Rap Crissetti. Any other questions? Not seeing any questions. I would entertain a motion to move forward.
Councilors.
You have, we already had a motion.
We did.
Yeah, you, you have the motion. I can't get my.
Thank you. So, yes, Assistant Town Clerk, Jan Murphy, please for the roll call.
Councilors, Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Council Dagwan?
Rob. Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Dar.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Adslis.
Yes.
Twelve yes? I didn't hear Council Dagwan. Did she say yes or no?
I did not hear my, as well.
Okay, so I have 12 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Council, sorry, Vice President Schnep, if you could please read item number 2021-135.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an item of new business that may be acted upon by a roll call majority. Item number 2021-135, acceptance of a fiscal year 2021 cultural district grant in the amount of $7,500 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Cultural District Grant Program for the Hyannis High Arts Cultural District.
Second.
A first and a second. And back to Director Jenkins for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levek. Again, the same grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, this time for the Hyannis High Arts Cultural District. Again, for the purpose of drawing people into the district and connecting the different cultural district partners throughout downtown Hyannis and Hyannis Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any questions, discussion? Not seeing any. We move to a vote, please.
Councilors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan. Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Dar.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Adslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
That was a yes from Hebert.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have 12 yes.
Excellent. Okay, so moving now into our old business, here we go. The, if I could ask Council Rap Crissetti, if you could get us going and read into the record item number 2021-084 and open up the public hearing, please.
Yes, beginning the CIP, Old Business Public Hearing Roll Call Two-Thirty School Council, item 2021-084, appropriation loan order in the amount of $3,752,550 for the purpose of funding the Barnstable High School and Barnstable Intermediate School Rooftop Ventilator Replacement Program is outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
Excellent. So we have a first and a second. And I believe we have Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown. We have Chair of the School Committee, Michael Judge with us, and also Gareth Markwell and Michael Lambros with us as well today. So, welcome. And whoever would like to take the rationale, please take it away.
Thank you for having us. And I'll turn it right over to Meg Mayo Brown, the superintendent.
Good evening again, President Levek, Town Counselors, I believe Gareth Markwell. Thank you, is going to share our, share our presentation. And I would formally, I would like to introduce, formally introduce Mike Lambros to the Town Council. Mike has been our Deputy Director of Facilities upon Dave Caniac's retirement. Mike is now the Director of Facilities, and I think this is his first opportunity to present to the Town Council. So, Mike?
Thank you, Superintendent Mayo Brown. Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
I would like to start off Gareth's slide, please. Thank you. So the first project is Barnstable High School, Barnstable Intermediate School Rooftop Ventilator Replacement. So this project consists of the existing RTUs at both locations that are greater than 20 years old. In many of these units, the air conditioning compressors have failed and replacement parts are not available, leaving areas of the building without ample cooling. Additional, additionally, the chassis frame and cabinet components of the units are deteriorating, allowing infiltration into the unit, causing potential leaks within the building. You can see those iterations in the pictures below. This is a continuation of a project previously funded last year. As you can see, the 2019-98. And the operating budget impacts are going to be estimated 5% to 10% per year energy savings. Slide, please. And so you see a few more pictures here of the deterioration of the cabinets and chassis. Slide.
And we're going to stop there, Mike.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Are there any? Can I go back to the main screen? Like I said, everybody, there we go, thank you. And I don't see Councilor Questions. Councilor, start, please.
Good evening, Mr. Lambros, I had a question about, so some of these air conditioning units aren't working at the moment. And we know that air quality is the number one way to prevent viruses from spreading. And we're bringing students back into the school, how does, how does that, are they working well enough? I mean, how does that work?
So the, the air conditioning part, the cooling aspect of the machines are not working. The units themselves are moving air. We do have fresh air supply and plenty of it.
Okay, thank you, yep. Are they, are they, so they're, are they, they're more energy efficient than the ones you have now, the new ones?
Much more, yes.
And they're, are they powered by electricity?
Yes.
Okay. And what's their life expectancy?
25 years, I believe.
Okay, you'll be here in 25 years and we can.
I hope so.
I hope so, too. Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Councilor Scott? Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this would be directed to you, Mr. Lambros. How many units are involved with this, this particular phase of the project?
This phase, there are four units. Unit one, two, three, and 10 on the high school.
Do you know how big, how big these units are, are they, in terms of tonnage? Do you know how, how, how large they are? The reason why I, I bring this up is, and this is going to be a recurring theme through the whole evening tonight. I've, I've had a, a bunch of residents in town reach out to me over the concerns of the potential cost to individuals on the, on the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And five, four units divided into arguably just under $4 million, it's kind of a big number. I mean, I'm just, that's a big number to me. And I guess, I know this is a continuation of a prior appropriation. But, you know, for every million dollars we save, that could potentially help out 100 people who can't afford to have the sewer hook. I, I, I think what I'm trying to do is just set the mentality early on, right out of the box, that, you know, just because the money's there, we really have to, have to, especially at this time, exercise complete financial integrity of the people at the town in terms of spending the money. I, I had a boss who once told me that, you know, if you want to do well, if you want to, want to become successful in business, learn how to, learn how to gross more, learn how to bring more revenue in. He said, the other thing you can do is you can cut your expense. And really, ideally, what you want to do is you want to do them both at the same time. And that's how you really get ahead. So I know that sounds obvious, but it's really hard to do. The more money we spend, the more money we bring in, the more money we spend. And I think that through all of these projects here, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I don't know whether you have the information, but at $900,000 a pop on these things, if you're getting replacement units to either run by gas or electricity, you got a crane, they pop off the curb on the roof and you pop another one in. Does it include interior ducting in, in the buildings? Or is this literally the rooftop ventilator? And I'll, and before you answer, because I'm not trying to trap you here, but if you look further down some of the appropriation lists, like in the Stenaville school, that's $200,000 ventilation unit. So, again, I, I, I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer here, but I, I just think that we really need to, especially in this time, be overly concerned about anything that's, that, that, that has to do with the general fund. Those are my thoughts, but maybe, I don't know if you have any of those answers, Mike, I don't know.
Okay, thank you for your question. So just first off, the, it's not just strictly pulling an old unit off, putting a new unit on. These new units are far more efficient in terms of heating and cooling spaces. It's, they're not meant, as you mentioned, the Stenaville units, those are individual classroom units. So those are far less expensive per unit. It's a much simpler design. The new units also, on the high school, this 2021-84, you need to replace all of the duct work inside because they have what are called variable airflow or variable air volume controls. So every single classroom, every space being supplied by these units will have a damper and its own reheat, so, and its own thermostat. So you can control the temperature in these spaces individually as opposed to the old way of you just dump heat into all the rooms and they eventually heat up.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm glad you're, you're elaborating on that because this, this really, you're talking about demoing the existing duct work in order to get flow in the space. So when I read a rooftop unit, you know, the rooftop part of the unit, the rooftop unit, I, the reason why I'm asking, asking this question is I put them on a roof before, I've done it myself, okay? So I have a, I have a basic idea what the costs are. When I see 3.752 million for four of them, what we're talking about here really is taking ceilings down in the school, redoing duct work, adding dampers, make up air, those types, I'm assuming. When was, when was this estimate done? What, how old is the estimate for, for the replacement of these things? Is it, is it relatively recent? Has this been, been put out to bid at any time in the recent future? Recent history, I guess, I should say?
So we just finished a project this past summer that was two units, and that was the previous project shown here. The 2019-098.
And did that come in at, at these budget numbers roughly? Or was it less, or was it in, in the ballpark?
It, it gave us, it, it worked with our contingencies.
Okay, is that where the additional two, one of them, we've got 202,000, right, coming, being transferred? Is that coming from the prior, prior project?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. I thank you for the, for the explanation, that, that's important, I think. This isn't just a piece of equipment that's going on the roof, and obviously it's going to have an impact on the classroom, on, you know. When, when is this going to occur? During the summer, they're going, you're going to tear, tear the ceilings out during the summer?
Yeah, a project of this capacity has to be done over the summer because that section of the building essentially needs to be shut down.
Is there any way any of these can be saved or pushed off, even one unit? Oh, yeah, I don't know if I'm asking, if you're the right person. I'm looking for savings here, I'm trying to find some savings here.
I, I have to go back through with our design and, or the engineer to.
I'm not trying to pressure you, it's just that, you know, 170 grand is, is, is 10 septic systems, right? For people in town. And I'm telling you, there's going to be people in town that are really going to struggle with this. You know, I, I just, again, the focus with, with general fund money, we, we have to, we have to try to find areas to save money. Right, thank you for your explanation, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Neary, any questions? Vice President Schnepp, give me a hand up, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your presentation, Mike. You know, this issue is coming up before other towns, and I know in the town of Sandwich, they actually decided they couldn't go forward and approve these, you know, replacement of units. But I was surprised to see that they also had access to funding from the Massachusetts, is it the School Board Authority or whoever provides financing? Is this something that would qualify for some state, state aid?
I believe so. We were reaching out to Cape Lake Compact to see, sometimes they have some, some programs that you can apply for, for energy efficient equipment such as these.
Okay, this, this seemed more at the state level, the, who, who does most of the school, school financing? They were, it was like a 40% contribution by the state. And so I didn't know if there was a process in which we can apply for that type of funding for certain types of improvements to our schools.
Councilor, I believe you're talking about the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA.
Yes, yes.
That does fund new construction as well as renovation projects. We can double check with them, but I don't believe this project will, but we'll certainly confirm because it would be certainly beneficial, right? To have some reinforcement for this, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice President Schnepp. Councilor Rap Crisetti, please.
Mr. President, through you, to my fellow counselor, Mr. Neary, if, if this is the precedent he wants to set for the evening going forward, perhaps he should have prepared amendments to reduce the amount presented.
Oweed, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Rap Crisetti. Any other questions? Councilor, start.
So another question from Mr. Lambros, are these units, do they have, they have capacity to put filters in them that are high, you know, high density filters, whatever the word is? So that's my question.
Yes, great question, especially in the times we live in now.
Right.
All of these new units have several layers of filters. There's a pre-filter, there's a moisture filter, and then there's also a MERV 13. I'm sure that's the number you were looking for, was the MERV rating. Yep, those are, yes, they do, several layers.
Okay, so one, one of the, if we're going to save 5% to 10% in energy costs, what is, how, is there, can you give me a ballpark figure what that means per unit? What, what does it cost to run the unit for, for a year?
Do not have those numbers, I can reach out, get them for you.
Yeah, okay, okay, I just wondered, thank you. Yep.
Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I would like to echo Vice President Schnepp's concerns about trying to find grant money. It seems like an energy saving, large expense like this should find some, some kind of grant fund support for energy saving for, for such a, a big endeavor like this. So I'm not familiar with what's available for schools, but I do think that there's a lot of energy saving incentives out there that perhaps could run around a little bit and, and see if there's some way to, to do, as Councilor Neary says, lessen the expense to the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Atsless, please.
So I just want to make sure I understand what's happening here. So this $3,752,000 and change was, that number was arrived at without exhausting any opportunity to, you know, to save money in terms of grants, rebates, things like that, that hasn't been done yet? I'm just want to make sure I understand that.
Correct.
So, if I may, a follow up?
Sure, Councilor.
Wouldn't it have been, wouldn't it have been prudent to do that before we come to this number and have it presented to the council so we can make a decision, maybe based on a, a reduced amount or understanding what the savings might be? And whoever, whoever can answer that question, I'd be happy to hear it.
Yeah, um, again, I can, I, I can reach back out, or we can follow up the MSBA and see if they have anything moving forward. I don't believe they did at the time of the project in 2019, or, sorry, the, the previous project of the high school, the 2019-098.
Just to chime in here, the MS School Building Authority is designed largely for school building, new construction, as well as large scale renovations. Historically, in the last five years, they've offered a, I think it was called a Green Incentive Program, which had funding for smaller refurbishment type projects for boilers and heating systems, some roof replacements. We put a statement of interest into the MSBA every year. It's purely, we, we put in our projects, and when they have funding available under those kind of enhanced or, or smaller projects, they'll take a look at the list and, and bring it up and, and contact districts. Typically, working with the MSBA, based on Barnstable's ability to pay, looking at property wealth, our reimbursement is kind of 30 cents on the dollar. They, they do have you do more extensive work in a lot of these projects from our past experience, which can quickly run, run the bill up a little bit higher than, than what we found. We can actually do the projects ourselves, so. We always have our applications in there, we, we look for opportunities. As Mike said, we're working with the Cape Lake Compact for all of these projects and taking advantage of any opportunities that arise. But we, we, we could be waiting years when we, we look at the MSBA. And often they like to see that the towns or school districts have these projects in the pipeline and are working towards completing them, and then that's kind of the shovel ready project mentality.
Thank you. Thank you, Gareth. Councilor, start.
I, I had a question. At Barnstable High School, we're, we're placing the rooftop units. It says next, this year we're replacing one, two, three, and 10. And next year we're replacing two and three again?
Yep.
And that's, I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Are those numbers right?
That, that's incorrect, yeah, that's, that's a typo, sorry.
Yeah, it's probably four, 11, 12.
Yeah, because the price is so close, it's probably another four units.
It is, we're going to continue to do four units per year, but it's not unit two and three again.
Okay, okay, thank you, just, okay. Thank you.
And, and duct work.
Councilor Collum, please.
Thank you, just a quick question. So it's possible then to start the project and retroactively fund it with these funds that we haven't even looked at yet or haven't been tapped for? We have an application pending? Like we could build it now and then retroactively apply the funds? Continuing project, you know what I mean?
The, the MSBA have different building milestones in their process. And you, you have to bring in their engineers and, and architects and design experts at certain points. You, when we get the appropriation, depending on where the timeline is, it's a point where we have to decide, do we move forward with the project or hang on for another year or, or wait for the next round of applications? If we see movement at the state level, where they're giving us indications that perhaps some of the recovery money is going into the School Building Authority, then we would pause, reassess the situation. But we're not, certainly not hearing anything of that nature at this point.
Well, if it's 30 cents on the dollar that the funding is, if the added cost by having their engineers and, and whatever compliance mechanisms they have that you have to comply with, if it, it's 30 cents on a dollar or more, it makes no sense, obviously, right? So, just asking, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Collum. Anybody else? Not seeing any. I'd like to open up the public hearing, anybody here to speak for the phone? Sorry, anybody from the public?
No, there's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, we're closing the public hearing. So seeing no other Councilor discussion, I would move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Coll, Collum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Neff.
Yes.
Johnesty.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atsless.
Councilor Atsless?
Who's him?
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Collum. I'm sorry, Clark.
Do I get to vote twice?
Sorry.
Yes, yes, thank you.
13 yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, staying with Counselor Rafferty, if you could read item number 21-085.
Old Business, this is a public hearing, roll call, two-thirds full council. Item 2021-0885, appropriation order in the amount of $160,000. The purpose of funding the Centerville Elementary School Unit Ventilator Replacement Project is outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Thank you. This is the Centerville Elementary Sorry.
Go ahead, Mike, with the rationale.
Thank you. So this is the Centerville Elementary School Unit Ventilator Replacement that we just spoke of briefly. So you can see the replacement of outdated unit ventilators at the Centerville Elementary School. The current units are 50-plus years old. They're original to the building. They're failing and not operating to current ventilation standards. Units are becoming obsolescent obsolete, and replacement parts are increasingly difficult to locate. As you can see, this is a continuation of the other elementary schools from 2016, 2018, and 19. Again, this is an energy savings of 5 to 10% a year.
Excellent. Thank you. If you could, there you go, very much. And actually, I'd like to actually open up the public hearing now. Is there any public comment, please, Sarah?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, then I would close the public hearing, and any council discussion, please? Counselor Scott?
Don't those pictures pictures bring back memories of being in an elementary school class? They're still there and still look just the same. So how many units are we talking about for $160,000?
In this school, there are 30.
Oh. So you can do them all for $160,000?
Yes, along with the gym air handler unit, which is
Okay. Thank you. Are they? Do they? Excuse me again, Michael. Do they have they have MERV 13 filters?
These do not. Classroom unit ventilators are not designed for anything over a MERV 10, so that's what we'll be shooting for.
Still good? Yeah.
Still sufficient.
So it brings they bring in outside air and turn the air over in the room?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Neary, you have a question, please? You're all muted, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry about that. Do they have a UV option on those where you could get a UV light into that cabinet? You know?
We were actually looking into that since we're in the design phase or the final design phase because of what's going on. And also, we're trying to see how feasible it is and efficient, because there's really no at the time, there wasn't science backing the UV at the rate we needed it, so.
Yeah, it is now. You know, you can get them in like even something as small as ductless, but I'm not sure you can get them in those wall units. I don't know whether an application, but that would actually I didn't I don't know whether the school the school departments nationwide are being required to have some form of you know, whether it be UV or higher MERV. I don't know. Dr. Brown, you would know, I would think, what's mandated. I'm just curious. I don't know that it is available. Might be an option anyway.
So we're not being there's there's no MERV rating that's mandated as of right now. But yes, again, to answer your question, we are looking into the option of potentially putting in the UV disinfectant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. Counselor Stein Hilber, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just more of a question for long-term planning. Have we done any studies? And obviously, this would be a big project to take on, but obviously, our elementary schools have really no central air conditioning. Go into the offices. A lot of times, the offices might have one, and they have like a jerry-rigged, you know, dryer vent coming off of the unit into the principals' office. But have we done any studies on bringing mini splits into some of these elementary schools? Some of the buildings aren't that big, but we're obviously spending a lot of money on air circulators, which is important, but if we started applying that money towards, you know, mini-split systems, because obviously those have heat pumps as well, so there'd be savings in terms of, you know, running a boiler as well, because you could use these heat pumps. But any any studies or research being done on that for elementary schools?
So we've been doing some research into mini splits. We have a few in some of our schools. In our climate where where we live, mini splits alone are not sufficient for heat. You can only get so much with a heat pump. You can only get so much heat out of cold air. Once you get below 32 degrees, it's extremely hard to heat once you get below using a heat pump, below freezing. That being said, we did try at BWB, which was the previous year's project. They do make what they call it's a DX coil. It's a cooling coil that goes in a unit ventilator for the cooling aspect, and we tried that in one classroom. It's their Maker Space. There's a lot of paper products in that room, so we want to bring the humidity down, see how it works. So that is kind of in the beta testing right there.
Yeah, I'd appreciate, you know, continuation of that, and I'm aware of the heat pump limitations, but even just getting some heat takes a little bit of the use of the boilers out. But, you know, in September and June, it's pretty brutal in the elementary schools, and then we use a number of the elementary schools for summer camp usually as well, which is, at the end of the day, the kids are all like red-faced. I know they're outside a lot as much as possible, but the buildings get extremely hot. So I would definitely like to see, you know, further research into that for kind of a long-term plan to get those, you know, buildings a little more habitable in the shoulder seasons and then certainly through the summer. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stein Hilber. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Go call.
Counselors. Dagone.
Yes.
Rob Crissetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnepp.
Yes.
Johnassie.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Collum.
Yes.
13 yes.
Thank you. Counselor Rafferty.
Yes, Old Business Public Hearing Roll Call Majority Vote on Item 2021-086, Appropriation Order in the Amount of $1,423,500. For the purpose of funding the Barnstable High School Synthetic Turf Replacement and Track Repair Project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan, as written.
Second.
Here, first and a second. And Michael Lambros for the rationale, please.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Gareth. So again, this is the Barnstable High School Synthetic Turf Replacement and Track Repair. So this includes removing and replacing the existing synthetic sports turf at the Barnstable High School Stadium. This project includes removal of the proper removal and proper disposal of existing turf, regrading the existing base level and inlaid sports markings. Existing turf is near the end of its its life, nine years, and is becoming increasingly difficult to properly groom, leaving sorry, something just popped up on my existing turf is nearing the end of its life. It's nine years old. It's becoming increasingly difficult to properly groom, leaving the surface with excessive infill buildup. The excessive buildup creates slippery conditions for sports play and subsequent safety issues. As you can see, the prior funding was the original install back in the fiscal year 2010. O and M cost for this is about $5,000 for maintenance per year, and as another note, the this project is being funded out of the school's reserves. Slide, please.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. For some reason, the breakout room's closed. I'll just have to put you all back in the breakout room if you give me a second.
I just got kicked out.
So did I.
I'm not sure what happened with that. Sorry. So just give me one second.
I'm afraid to say anything anymore.
Right, you're asking too many questions, Bob. Not asking questions.
So we should join?
All join.
Yes, rejoin. Thank you.
Back to the slides.
Oh. Okay.
There we go.
So as you can see there, the some damage to the turf and the track. Slides. Thank you, Gareth.
Hey. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Now, I would also I would like to, is there any public comment in regards to this?
There's no public comment at this time.
And I will close the public hearing. Counselor Discussion, please. Counselor Atslis? You're all muted, sir.
Muted.
Counselor Atslis?
Muted. Thank you, Mr. President. So the the current surface is nine years old. How long is the surface like that supposed to last?
Eight to 10 years.
Okay. And the $5,000 maintenance per year, what does that entail? What kind of maintenance do you do on it?
There's very minimal grooming, really, updating your grooming machine and infill as needed.
Does does the school or does your department have its own grooming grooming machine?
Yes, we do.
And as far as maintaining its concern, obviously, your department will maintain it. As far as usage, my understanding with turf surfaces like that, there's a number of hours per year that's appropriate for those type of surfaces. And who monitors that to make sure it's not being overused or it's being used to a certain point where maybe it needs a rest? Because it certainly seems like that field in particular gets a lot of usage outside of, you know, the high school sports, and I don't know that it's actually being monitored in the past, and will that be the case moving forward? So it will last as long as it as it should?
Yes, so moving forward, we have our facility scheduler is going to be tracking the use on all of our fields, and that she will work directly with our maintenance department, and we're setting up with the design engineer a maintenance schedule for every so many hours this field to be groomed and properly maintained.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Atslis. Counselor Rafferty?
Yeah, I had a question about the track. The material of the track, is there an alternative to the track material that could be used that has a little bit longer life? It seems like an annuity for the turf company, you know, guaranteed annuity every eight to 10 years on the whole thing. So are there alternatives to what what is existing?
So to answer your question, we're not replacing the track. We're just repairing the track in spots where there are gouges or tears.
And what do you so for 1.4 million, you're just doing repairs or other than infill? So do you infill the track now or do you infill infill the the field?
I'm sorry. So I apologize if I was confusing. We're replacing the synthetic turf inside the track, the sports field.
Right.
And we're repairing the track itself.
Just repairing.
It's a full replacement of the the field turf and the base layer, and the track itself will be spot repairs.
And is the track also the same age as the turf?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rafferty. Counselor Neary?
You guys know where I'm going with this, right?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went to the field today. I walked the track. I walked the field. There is no doubt that the field is now getting to point. I mean, it's it's laying down, but granted, we're coming out of the winter. And frankly, there hasn't been much activity on it for the last year due to COVID. I noticed a couple areas on the rubberized portion of the track, actually down at the far end and like where the lower fields used to be. But it seems like it's some form of a rubber compound or something that you know, can be patched in some fashion. I look at this as 83 sewer hookups for folks who can't afford it. And my opinion was my opinion is that I would just feel more comfortable taking another year, doing what you can to keep the thing going, and then we'll see see what happens when we kind of get our legs under us for some of the bigger bigger projects. That's just my opinion, but I didn't notice any trip passes. I didn't notice any safety safety areas where somebody would, you know, compared to what I ran on back in high school. I mean, it's like, you know, like Pantheon. It's beautiful. But anyways, that's beside the side. I just 1.4 million bucks that we can, you know, maybe figure out a more appropriate place to put it. I think there's just an irony. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
So just to answer or to respond to your concerns, this is being funded. I don't know if I got cut off earlier out of the school's reserve account?
I know it is.
Okay.
Through the president, if I may, I do have a slide that shows this state of the field in terms of safety and might be helpful if Mike shared that information.
Thank you, Meg. So this is called a GMAX test. What this is, is this is an impact test to tell how safe your field is, especially in this day and age with concussions. So if you get a GMAX testing, you can see on the left here, there's a big chart. You can see your GMAX average. Those numbers are the numbers we're concerned with. Go ahead. So the GMAX average is the concerning number. If we hit 200 in any location on the turf, it is deemed unusable. This is from this test is from last summer in July, I believe July 20. And you can see we have 196. We have another spot that's 188 down at number seven. We have another 182 at location nine. These locations are right along the goal line. If you see location nine and one are right on the goal line closest to the school. So also, you see the total average. The number I've been advised to inform everyone is the number you want your average to be below. Your high for your average, your total averages is 165. We're already three above that at 168 for our total average. That's not a that's not an all stop as as is the 200, but it's it's a concerning number.
Can I, Counselor Neary, as a follow-up?
Just to follow up, I'm curious, would 6, 9, and 1 be approximately the area of the goal for on a lacrosse game?
So 6 would be, 9 and 1
That's behind the cage, right?
Is behind the cage. It's right on the goal line of a football. Is behind the cage. It's right on the goal line of a football field.
Any, Counselor Neary, you all set?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead. Counselor Dagwone.
Hi, thank you. Um, just a point of, of information, um, on an average year, how many, um, games are played on football games? And I guess lacrosse games are played on that field? And how many were played this past year? If anybody knows.
So in, in average football season is eight weeks with four home games, five, depending on whether or not Thanksgiving is yours. Um, and for lacrosse, you have both boys and girls with about a 15 to 20 game season, half of those. So anywhere from seven to 10 games each at home. Um, this past fall, fall is actually, the football season got pushed till this current month. So there were no games on it this fall besides field hockey, which was just varsity games. There were three.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Star, you had your hand up.
Um, so just, just to follow along with Mr. Neary's line is, um, so we're talking, it's, it's going to cost us $140,000 a year. Have a turf field at the high school. Um, so, um, it's going to last 10 years. Um, my question is, a couple of questions. What, um. What is, what is the turf made out of? Um, I've understand that there are, um, some chemicals of emerging concern. That are used in the production of these, these turfs, including PFAs and PFOs. Um, does the turf, so that's one question. The other question is, do those things, does the chemicals leach into the, into the groundwater underneath the turf? I don't know if you can answer those questions.
Um, I can't say yes or no to any of those because I don't know. Um, I do know what we are gonna ask for in our specs. For when we put this out to bid are, we're gonna spec a PFOS free product.
Okay. Oh, good. Thank you. Um, and so you, you, you got it like, um, 100 yards of, of. Um, turf. Um, what do you do it? Where does it go?
When it's properly disposed of.
Yeah, what is properly disposed of? What does that mean? Properly disposed of.
I, I would, to get, to get the appropriate answer, I don't want to mislead anyone. So I would have to reach out to John Amato, our, um, field expert.
From my understanding, then none of it's recyclable. So it all ends up in a landfill somewhere. Um, so. Um, okay, thank you.
Counselor, Vice President Shep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll continue along that line of thinking that, have, have any schools or any, uh, sports areas? Ever converted back to grass or is, are we just sort of? This is, this is our future is replacing synthetic fields every 10 years?
So, so some schools do, um, just a brief. Explanation of what the. Repercussions would be, um. So there are two fields on Cape for high schools that I know of that are, that are grass. That's Mashpee and DY. Those are strictly football fields. Right now on this turf field, we play boys and girls soccer. We play football. We play field hockey. And we play boys and girls lacrosse. That, that's a lot. If this becomes a football, if this becomes a natural grass field. The maintenance alone eliminates your spring sports because that's your growing season. You may get some soccer games. But it's going to be deemed a football field because football is, there's so much wear and tear. That football does to a natural grass field that you re, you really need to resaw it or reseed every spring. And you cannot use that field again until the fall.
All right. Well, that's, that's good to know. Thank you. Um, just a quick question on the budget. The project contingency is about 25% of the construction and acquisition costs. That, that seems pretty high. Is that because you're not sure what the track repairs are going to cost or?
Um, it's both what the track repairs are going to cost and we've decided to increase our contingencies from 15 to 20% on most of our projects.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Mark.
Counselor Represetti, please.
Thank you. I don't want to belabor this, but I, I think, um, generally, um, I have concerns about this being a, a high priority. Um, right at this moment, when I see school priorities of 14 and 15 that talk about. Upgrades to the district wide network servers and to wireless access network to me. Where we are with COVID seems to take precedence and that's, that's short money. That's 100,000 here and 200,000 there. That could affect the entire district, um, and, or a priority, uh, four in the school out of your, uh, out of your 16. Um, priorities, uh, you know, of boiler replacements in several schools. To me, heating, heating, um, boilers is, uh, um. 30-year-old boilers, uh, at risk and they're a quarter of a million dollars apiece. You could do a few of those. And, uh, the wireless and quite a bit more that would affect the entire district, uh, rather than just those playing sports. So, um, I don't know. I, I think maybe, uh, there should have been some, some consideration to pivot away from, uh, um, this, uh, in this year. And, uh, look to something that would have, uh, um, you know, more comprehensive, uh, effect on the, on the entire district.
Thank you, Counselor Represetti. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any. Counselor Star.
One more question. So, um, so my, my question is, is it, is it much safer for our high school students to be playing? On, on, um, synthetic turf as compared to grass turf? Are there fewer injuries?
Um, I, I can't answer if there's fewer injuries. I can say that the newer turf is safer than this turf system. The newer turf systems have a, a inch and a quarter pad. Under the turf itself, which is meant to greatly reduce the impact.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Star, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Levec. Um, if we can consider, um, delaying this a year. Do you think that there might be more, um, um, environmental and technological advances that might, um. Um, make this a longer lasting. Project for our, for our students.
Um, I, I would have to say. Not at the current rate of how things are going. Um, back when we started, when this one was installed in 2010, it's an eight to 10 year shelf life. And they're still saying roughly an eight to 10 year shelf life for turf as of today. So that hasn't changed. But I can't see in one year that drastically changing.
Uh, just to close out, uh, just in kind of. Combining a few of these questions, the, um. The sa- safety concerns, you know, obviously the conditions of the field, if we do not move forward tonight on something like this. Can you play on this field or do you have to, is that not an option? You have to find some other place to play?
We're, we're doing another G max test in the following weeks. Um, you can't do it when the ground's frozen or during the winter. That will dictate, but I walked the field with our expert, John Amato. Um. He, he says it's, it's not looking good. It, the fields and it's, he, his expert, um. Opinion was most likely not. If we get the spring, we'll be lucky. But he said the fall. We're most likely not going to be able to use it.
I mean, I did, I've noticed the tears and I see that and I just, you know, I wouldn't want to see somebody tripping and falling or something like that. So. But thank you for that. Counselor Atzlis.
I'm making a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so even though that field's nine years old, I think those of us who spent enough time on that field over the years. It's been in pretty poor condition for probably, you know, the previous three years anyways. I mean, I might be, I might be generous about that. Um, the reason for that, I'm sure there's a, a lot of different opinions. Um, you know, the, the, the maintenance effort at the time. Um, I can tell you that many people I talked with have never, I've been down in that field. I've never seen that grooming machine in operation. I'm not sure when it actually occurs, but my point is if. If this field's been in poor condition, uh, prior to now, I can tell you it was, it's not, it hasn't been nine years. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go maybe six to seven years. Um, after that was installed, you know, in the last three or four years, it's been in poor condition. If this new surface gets put in, along with the other surface that's already in at the, at the baseball field slash soccer field. I truly hope that the maintenance effort will be much improved so we can get maximum life out of these, um, out of these turf fields. So we're not, um, you're not coming, you know, not coming back for another million dollars plus, um, before the actual life of these things are supposed to, are supposed to last. Um, it's, uh, I spent, again, spent enough time on that field. Uh, I know, you know, coached on those fields. I have, you know, I know a lot of folks who play on those fields, students, coaches, friends, family, so on and so forth. Um, I just think that there needs to be a better effort. Um, as far as maintaining the fields moving forward and maybe we'll get, maybe we'll get, uh, more use out of them and maybe they'll last longer. I know you're new in the position, so this isn't necessarily a comment geared toward you. But I just think that that's something that needs to be said because, uh, many of us, I know, are thinking about the community. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Dagwone, please. Thank you, Counselor Atzlis.
Yeah, I can compare with, uh, Counselor Atzlis on this. Uh, when these fields went in, they started talking about doing this synthetic turf. I mean, a lot of money went into, you know, putting this, this turf in. And, um, to hear that it's not necessarily being taken care of, uh, the way it should be. And so maybe in the future, that might be something we, we as a council, or you as the council, because I will no longer be a counselor. Would, um, you know, maybe look in on it from year to year to see. You know, um, how, how the maintenance is, you know, is working on those. But also I think you'd like to keep in mind that, um, our students have been out for years, have not been, had the athletic and. It, you know, we're hoping that this, this is going to be a turnaround. And, and we do want to, um, not take away those kinds of activities that finish students come to school for activity. Um, but we want them all to play on a safe, a safe field. So, um, I just, you know, want counselors to kind of keep that in mind as we, as we look to decide on, um, whether we want to vote, um, in favor of this project. And the fact that we have some reserves, I suggest that, um, my vote is going to be in favor of it. Uh, because they have reserves that also, um, looking they get, see the kids get back, um. You know, into the kinds of things that they've been left out for a long time and to be able to do it safely. Thank you, Mr. President.
President Levec.
Counselor Dagwone, uh, Town Manager Ellis, please.
Uh, just, just to reinforce this discussion, uh, excellent question by, um. Counselor Atzlis. Um, these are discussions that the superintendent and I had. When the school department first came to us in discussions with the Field of Dreams. Uh, they engaged not only us, but the leadership of the school committee and the leadership of the council at the time. The school department committed to the necessary maintenance for this sort of investment. And I know Meg Mayo Brown is committed to it. We've been talking about maintenance as recent as, you know, today or yesterday. I can't remember which day, Meg. The, uh, Jason had to blur a little bit. So, um, you know, I just want to share that with you, that this is not absent from any discussion. And I would not support a capital project going forward, that that commitment on proper maintenance wasn't made. So that's my expectation as we proceed.
Thank you for that clarification, Town Manager Ellis. Counselor Hebert.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and, um, I, I firmly, uh, support what the town manager just said. Um, my question originally before the town manager's call, um, was, uh, I know that. The school committee, uh, with their chairperson, Mr. Judge, and I, I know that the superintendent is, is, uh, totally committed to the safety and well-being of our students. Uh, I know Michael, uh, Lambros is doing the very best he can to, and to, uh, follow up with all the wonderful questions that every single counselor has put forth. Inclusive of, uh, saying that one of the specs is going to be, we don't want PFOS, we don't want PFAS. Um, and I'm assuming that, um, Mr. Uh, Matt, uh, Markwell is, um, you know, fully, uh, engaged in the decision-making process. Um, so I, I think that it's hard for us to second guess, uh, the school department's, uh, decision here to, to make this go forward. Um, you know, we put our trust, uh, in, in, um, your decision-making process and, um, so. We, we share a limited responsibility because really the school department is really in charge of this and you run it through finance and you run it through, uh, town manager. And if they approve, um. You know, I, I'm going to vote for this, uh, positively. It does not diminish the wonderful, wonderful questions that every single counselor has asked. Uh, in regards to this whole process, but I certainly kudos to the school department, uh, and your whole team for the work that you're doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Counselor Star.
This last question I promised. Um, it says, um, in the CIP book that the funding source is the general fund reserves. And, and I've heard that it comes from the school fund reserve.
They, they are all the general fund reserves.
Okay, thank you.
And the, and then we sit down and we segment up. Um, and Mark Milner Gareth can certainly go into the technical details of that, but for planning purposes, we have. Municipal and schools and schools look to their reserves for one-time, not reoccurring type costs that are priority. This aligned with the exact use of those reserve funds.
Thank you, Town Manager Ellis. Hey, any other questions? No, not seeing any other questions.
Counselors. Rob Crisetti.
Pass.
Why do you have one?
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
No.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Sign Hilber.
Yes.
Atzlis.
No.
Fogan.
Yes.
Boss. Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rob Crisetti.
No.
10 yes, 3 no.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown. Thank you, uh, Facilities Director Michael Ambrose. And thank you, uh, Gareth for being with us and, uh, School Committee Chair. Michael Judge for being with us as well tonight. So, um, we appreciate it and, uh, we move on. Have a great night and thank you for answering all our questions and being present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown. Okay, moving on, um, now we welcome our Airport Director, Katie Service. Uh, for the new round of old business that we have, and I would ask Counselor Column if you could read item number 2021 dash 087. And open the public hearing, please.
Yes, I'd like to open the public hearing for item number 2021 dash 087. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $7,500,000. For the purpose of funding the airport's design, construct and replace engineered materials arresting system. Project is outlined in the fiscal year 2022, um, fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan. The public hearing needing a roll call, two-thirds of the full council.
Okay.
You know, first and a second, and Katie Far Rationale, please.
Good evening, President Levec. Um, counselors, thank you for having me tonight. Katie Service, Airport Manager. Wanted to go over, um, the project real quick. Um, for, this is for 202187 is for our EMAS project. Um, EMAS, uh, it's on page 52 of the. project. EMAS, it's on page 52 of the book, the CIP book. EMAS stands for Engineered Materials Arresting System. It's a crushable concrete that slows the momentum of an aircraft if it were to overshoot a runway upon landing. So if you think about it, it's a safety area for a runway, very similar to a highway shoulder. That's the best way to explain it. Typically, when an airport does not have the land necessary for the standard runway safety area, they use what they call EMAS at the end of their runway, which is an equivalent level of safety that the FAA allows. So over the past several years, this system, which was installed in 2003, 18 years old, typically has a 10-year life, according to the FAA. It was actually one of the first systems installed in New England. It has deteriorated through the years. We have a loss of material. So you can see on the picture lower right. Picture upper right shows you the system. It's basically that system that's right on the approach to runway six, across the street from the Staples Plaza. So you can see in the lower right picture that we do have some deterioration. And what you see there is what what I'd like to call leakage of the system of that concrete, that crushable system. We've had inspections done on the system over the past several years. It has neared its end of life. The FAA has placed it on the Capital Improvement Plan for the New England region to get this system replaced within the next round, so fiscal year 2022. The estimate for the system, $7.5 million, was based on August estimates, August of 2020, based on recent replacement of EMAS systems at other airports. Ninety-five percent of this is funded by the FAA and Mast dot Aeronautics. And the typical 5% share that the airport would be providing for the project is eligible for CARES Act funding. So this project, at this point in time, fiscal year 2020, would be a zero cost to the airport. That's all I have for rationale.
Thank you. If you could share the screen. Thank you very much. And Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel discussion, please. Any questions, comments? Counselor Starr?
Sort of a related question is, what can you tell me why we need a two-thirds vote? Is it because it's the airport?
It's because it's a loan, loan authorization.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Starr. Any other questions? Counsel Cullum?
I was gonna ask Counselor Neary if he was gonna ask about the funding. Hundred percent funded, or is he gonna let him lie this time?
Katie delivered delivered the rationale. It was it's free. I think that's the best rationale.
Free, we like it, right?
Somehow, some way, we can get that money.
Can we get any back? Can we get a little bit back?
Okay, let's not lose control here. We got a long. Okay, so any other question? Will Levitties okay? Counsel Schneider?
I'm just trying to figure out how a block of cement is gonna cost $7.5 million. But so if it's crushable concrete, does that mean if you have a an airplane that runs off the runway that it has to be repaired every time it's crushed?
Yes, that is a very good question. It does have to be repaired. How this system is is put together, it's in blocks. So they're probably about four foot by four foot block. So depending on what repair was needed, you don't have to replace the whole system, but you replace the block. We do have insurance on the system just for that reason. It is an expensive system. Right now, this is there's only one company that supplies these blocks for the FAA, the only company that's approved by the FAA. So this is the only game in town. $7.5 million is extremely expensive. It's I, you know, it is very expensive for us, even though we're getting funding from the FAA to support this. $7.5 million, that's, you know, that's a new runway, that's a new runway or that's a new taxiway. It's a very expensive system. However, what it does, provide that extra level of safety is important. And of course, we definitely need it in that particular area.
Follow-up, Vice President Schneider?
Yes, yes. And and it probably extends to some of the other items that you'll bring forward. Was it last meeting, I believe you brought forward an update on the master plan, and there was some discussion of extension of one of the runways. How does this fit in? How does this particular runway and EMAS system fit into with those larger plants?
Sure. So if I could share my screen again, so I can just show you the airport, it might be a little bit easier. So if you can see my cursor, so this is the EMAS bed that we're talking about. This is Route 28 right here. This is the airport terminal. The runway that we are talking about extending is the opposite runway, 1533. We're not looking at any type of extension on that runway until beyond fiscal year 2027. So this is for the existing runway here, 624. The next item we'll talk about is rehabilitation of the pavement on this runway, but it has nothing to do with the runway extension that's being anticipated for the crosswind runway that's associated with 533.
Counsel Rob Crissetti, please.
Thank you, Katie. Good to see you. Explain, I think it's great that, you know, we're not paying for it, but we are paying for it. You know, all of us are paying for it. Explain to me how this project, which is not unanticipated, how it qualifies for CARES Act money. I thought that was, you know, unanticipated due to COVID.
So CARES Act money can be used for operating budget, but it can also be used to pay the local share of projects that are approved by the FAA using their airport improvement program monies. So because the project is going through that process, the FAA will allow airports to use CARES Act for their local share. So we will be using our local share CARES Act money for that local share. That's how.
And remind me what you received?
$17.9 million was what we received in grant funding. And that, again, can be used for operating expenses, which right now, we've asked for $3.3 million of reimbursement from the FAA. And we can also use it for development projects that are for economic gain for the airport as well. So we have a mix. We've looked, the Airport Commission has looked at a tiered approach on how we would spend our money. And obviously, projects like this local share matches, that comes up high in the tier level.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counsel Rob Crissetti. Any other? Okay, I would move to vote, please.
Counselors? Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yeah.
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Johnsonsey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsli?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
13 yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, sticking with Counselor Cullum. Could you please read into the record item number 2021-088, and open the public hearing, please?
Yes, this is item 021-088, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $13,45,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's design and reconstruction runway 624 project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing with a roll call of two-thirds of the council.
Okay.
Rational? Okay.
Katie Service, please.
Sure, thank you. This project is to rehabilitate the existing runway. I'll just go back to the overall graphic. It's runway 624. The project, the runway itself was last rehabilitated in 1991, so it's 30 years old. We have done our best with cracked ceiling, cracked repair to extend the life of the pavement. The photographs that I have on the right-hand side, you can see some of the cracked ceiling that has been done at the airport. And then what you see for that grooved area is really a deterioration of the asphalt on the runway, where we're getting to a point where the runway is no longer grooved. So we have a grooved runway runway so that it helps with landing aircraft. Also, water sheet flows off through the groove, so it definitely helps for aircraft that are landing or taking off from the facility. But we're getting to a point where it's becoming flat. So we've seen some further deterioration, which is starting to pose some serious safety risks. We've had some large chunks of the asphalt that are starting to become problems with foreign object debris, that FOD, we call it FOD, it's anything that can be ingested into an aircraft engine. So we're starting to see some deterioration in this pavement to the point where we're picking up a lot of those pieces of asphalt, of rubberized asphalt on the runway. A full reconstruction of the facility is needed. It's not just a mill and overlay. It's completely redoing the the box underneath the runway. Of course, we are testing the soils in that area as well for PFOS as we move forward with any of these projects. So that is going to be included in the project. The estimate of the three, just over 3 million, was an estimate that was collected in August of 2020. It was based on recent airport projects for a complete reconstruction of other runways. Ninety-five percent of that funding is through the FAA and Mast dot. And again, the typical 5% airport share is eligible for CARES Act funding. That's all I have for the rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. And going to Sarah, is anyone here for public comment, please?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any counsel discussion, questions? Not seeing any, I would move to vote, please.
Counselors? Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Johnsonsey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsli?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert? Hebert?
Are you there?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. 13 yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, Counsel Cullum, one more, please. Item number 2021-089.
Right. This is item 2021-089, appropriation order in the amount of $200,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's reporting, testing, mitigation, and monitoring of PFOS soils Phase 3 project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing with a roll call majority of full council.
First and a second, and back to you, Director Service, for the rationale.
Thank you. The photographs on the upper right are showing the two areas that DEP worked with us on mitigation site for PFOS. As you know, PFOS is located in our firefighting foam. Unfortunately, the FAA only has one approved type of foam to use, which is the A-trip left that the airport does use. In September of 2020, we mitigated those two sites, just about two acres of our 639 acre acres that we have on the airfield. The photograph on the upper left is an asphalt cap that was added basically to the grass area that we have here. And the photograph on the to the right and below shows the polyfiber cap that we use for the mitigation site. This is Phase 3. We have included up to four phases at this point in time on our CIP Phase 3 for fiscal year 2021, includes those additional funds that we need to monitor and to test beyond the cap, making sure that our cap is functioning as it's supposed to, and as required by DEP, and making sure that we're monitoring that site and ensuring that there is no longer PFOS that is going into the groundwater at that point. The $200,000 is eligible for CARES Act funding. We plan on using reimbursement requests to the FAA for this project. That's the end of my rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Sarah, is there any public comment in regards to this?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing then, and open the floor for council discussion. Any questions? Not seeing any, speak up. If you're not in the video, and if not, I would move to vote, please.
Thank you. Counselors? Neary?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Johnsonsey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsli?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rob Crissetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
13 yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Stein Hilber, please. You can read into the record item number 2021-090, and open public hearing, please.
You told me 092, so I was prepared for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. 090.
All right. Item 2021-090, appropriation order in the amount of $57,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of SRE equipment project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan as written. This is a public hearing, roll call majority, full council.
Okay.
First and a second, and back to Director Service for the rationale.
Sure, thank you. This is airport number 32. It's a Chevy vehicle that's about 20 years old. Typically, the FAA requires that we replace snow removal equipment when it's necessary. You know, we have to clear our runways and taxiways and make sure that they're open for the public. So anytime that we have an opportunity to replace failing equipment or aging equipment, we do so. So the estimate for this particular equipment was based on recent replacements that the airport has made. Again, August 2020 is when we reassessed those dollars and made sure that it was still a sound estimate for this piece of equipment. Typically, 80% of funding would be supplied by Mast dot Aeronautics, and then 20% would be the airport share. Again, this project would be eligible if we so chose for CARES Act funding for our 20% share. That's all I have for rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Sarah, anybody for public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And any other counselor discussion? Just to Atsulis, please.
Just a curiosity question. What what do you do with the old vehicle?
So typically, for the old vehicles, we either just trade them in if there's some trade-in value for those vehicles. Sometimes, other airports have reached out to us to purchase those other vehicles. We haven't utilized the procurement office for surplus equipment of this type, but oftentimes, we find some trade-in value. If for some reason, the trade-in value isn't what we deem appropriate, then we'd probably go out for surplus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. If I may, are you getting more life out of your snow removal equipment due to the last few mild winters?
I think we're getting more life out of our equipment because our very capable mechanic that we have on hand. We have a lot of pieces of equipment, and he does an amazing job, and he really puts in the extra mile to make sure we have what we have, and we have what we need for our storm. So I owe it to him.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Check my page two here. Not seeing any, I would move to a vote, please.
Thank you. Counselors? Snapp?
Yes.
Johnsonsey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atsli?
Yes.
Bogan? Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Gressetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
13 yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Counselor Stein Hilber, if you could all read item number 2021-091, open a public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 2021-091. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $5,500,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's construction of an extension of Mary Dunn Way project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022/Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
The first and the second, and Director Service for the rationale, please.
Sure, thank you. The extension of Mary Dunn Way is a project that we've been looking at for several years. In fact, I've been at the airport now for six years, and this was a project that we were looking at back then. As part of the overall airport business plan, we've always wanted to improve this roadway. The graphic that you see in the upper right shows two different colors of the road. The red is existing road that we have. The yellow is an unimproved road. It's basically a gravel base. It was created using millings from previous airport runway and taxiway projects where we milled the asphalt and reused it for an unimproved road. We have since had many potential tenants coming to us wanting to build more hangars on the facility, especially in that area where you see the trees located in that area. We have a lot of requests for that. We also have the Air and Space Museum that would like to relocate from the landing at Hyannis over to the airport at some point in time. So having an improved roadway that is more attractive for anybody coming into the east side of the airport is critical. It meets our business plan effort, which is target, two targeted goals. One, to improve general aviation services, and two, to diversify our airport revenue stream to look at both aviation and non-aviation revenue opportunity. Right now, the, the road is really in poor shape. It's actually very depressing to look at. It's not a very welcoming sight for the east side of the road, so it really does. This type of development does qualify for CARES Act funding. Like I said earlier, we have broken up our CARES Act funding into four different tiers, and this was approved by the airport commission. Really, tier one, two, and three, we're looking at making sure we had enough money set aside to pay for our operating expenses. So we've, we've identified how much that is for each fiscal, for each fiscal year. The CARES Act has a four-year life, so we've identified how much we need to operate it. So that's already been set aside. We've identified other safety projects that we are actually getting funding through the airport, through the FAA Airport Improvement Program. So many of those safety-related projects, such as the EMS project and the runway rehabilitation project, are included in your typical airport improvement program. The last year that the airport commission wanted us to look at were projects that were associated with ways to meet our business plan goals, ways to increase revenue so that the airport wasn't completely tied to aviation-type airline revenue, which we've seen such a significant decline due to COVID. So this is one of those projects that we, that we would like to proceed forward with that would really open the doors to future development for the airport so that we could have different types of revenue coming in, again, to solidify our self-sufficiency as an enterprise fund. That's all I have for the rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Oh, Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. And so I would close the public hearing. And Counselor Bogan, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, you did. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Katie. And you may have said this, and if you did, forgive my missing it or forgive my ignorance. I appreciate when you say something's 100% CARES funding eligible, but what's the likelihood of actually receiving the funding? Is it basically assured when you're, when it's eligible? Or is there still some risk that you might not get it?
No, that's a great question. So we already do have the grant. We were awarded $17.9 million, and we do have to follow the protocol that the FAA has put in place for development project or reimbursement. So to date, we have about $3.3 million that we've requested and have received from the FAA for operating revenue. For this type of project, we have to amend that grant with the FAA. We've already had several conversations with them regarding development projects, and it's simply what they do is they take that $17.9 million that we've already been awarded, and they make a separate grant for us just for that project.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you, Counselor Bogan. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Katie, would you mind, on your slide, do you mind orienting us to where we are? What, what are we looking at?
Sure.
Or where that is in relation to, say, Route 28 Kmart?
Let me go back to this one. Oops, excuse me. So you can see my cursor, yes?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So this right here is Route 28. Here's your rotary.
Mm-hmm.
This is the terminal. So if you follow 28, it kind of cuts it off, sorry, but it goes toward Camp Street. And then this is Mary Dunn. Mary Dunn comes right before Camps, the electrical facility. And then it wraps around where Steamship Authority rents space from us, about 11 acres for parking.
Yep. I know exactly where we are.
Yep.
Awesome.
That's where that road is.
Okay, thanks. Somehow, I don't know, I had it on the other side in relation to Mary Dunn, the Mary Dunn.
Right, yeah, that, that is confusing, but yes, it's, it's on the east side of the airport.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to continue on that same, so I'm, I'm looking at Google. So that's Estella Road, I believe, right?
Yes.
And it doesn't, it doesn't get out of the airport, though. At some point, it would be, lack of a better word, a turnaround, I assume?
Right, right now, we have, our team is looking at a cul-de-sac basically at this terminus here. We have talked to the planning department as well as Cape Cod Commission about at some point in time, hopefully, having a cross-through over the railroad track so that you can get to former Exit 7, from former Exit 7, to this site without having to go through the intersection. That forthcoming. Right now, the plan is just to put a cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
And by planes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Counselor Neary. Any other questions? Looking at page two here, I'm not seeing any. I'll move to a vote, please.
Thank you. Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Gressetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Oh, again.
Hebert.
I don't think he's with us.
Okay. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Okay, that's gonna be, um, Knapp.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you.
Sticking with Counselor Stein Hilber for one more, please. Item number 2021-092.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 2021-092. Appropriation loan order in the amount of $692,500 for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of fleet hangar facade, windows, and doors project as outlined in the fiscal year 22/Fiscal Year 26 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
The first and a second, and back to Director Service for the rationale.
Thank you. This is a 44-year-old facility that we own, the airport owns, and we lease out to Hyannis Air Service, otherwise known as Cape Air. We are currently replacing the hangar doors for that facility at this point in time. And this is to, to replace the fleet hangar facade. You can see in the pictures off to the right that we do have a crumbling facade, facade, and we also have replacement of the doors and windows in that location. Cape Air has done a lot of work on this facility through the years, mostly internal to the facility. This is the envelope of, of the building that we would be responsible for. So the deficiencies that I just spoke of are noted there. There's a lot of water infiltration that gets in through the existing windows and doors. The estimate that we have for the $692,500 was received in August of 2020 from our on-call architect. It's based on refurbishment of existing buildings at other airports. Again, this project would be eligible for 100% CARES Act funding. That is all I have for the rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment, please?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any council discussion, questions? Counselor Bogan.
Just a comment, Katie, I think I've said this before. Apropos of what the concern that Counselor Neary raised earlier, it seems like very often, or more often than not, when you come before us, you come with ready-made projects that have built-in funding. I don't know if that's good fortune or diligence on your heart, but take the credit. I commend you. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
I would say it's well deserved. Councilor Neary. You're muted, sir. Paul, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. You, you obviously bring, bringing forward quite a few projects, and I'm sure that has some, some bearing with the CARES Act funding that's available. Should all of these projects come to fruition? Is there, you've got a buffer zone in there? I know you mentioned roughly 3 million for operations or something like that. Is that, what would the, what do you anticipate the total expenditure? What, what would you have left on that?
So I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do have an Excel spreadsheet, and I could probably find it to you and send it to you real quick. But we do have an estimate, like I said, for operating anywhere between 3.3 and 4 million. The rest of the projects have been identified, especially the ones that I'm showing here tonight, so that we get down to that 7.9 within the four-year window that we have to spend those funds. So I certainly can send that to you after the meeting.
So you'd have 7.9 left roughly if, if they all, if they all get approved?
No, if, if we get all of the CARES Act projects approved, then we would be, we would be reducing that 17.9 million. The idea is, we don't want to leave any money on the table. If we do not use it within the four years, then we're kind of in trouble. So what I've done is I've taken a lot of those tiered projects, and I've uploaded them in the first, basically, two years, fiscal year 2021 and 2022, to make sure that we're spending that 17.9 million for projects that make sense.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. A quick question, I have a pretty good guess, but for the public record, I noticed in your slides you had a reference to AO. Can you please explain what AO means?
Appropriation order.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any, let's move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Gressetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
12 yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Counselor Shaughnessy, would you help me, please? Item number 2021-093, open the public hearing.
My pleasure. This is Old Business Public Hearing, roll call, majority, full council. This is item number 2021-093. Appropriation order in the amount of $115,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of snow removal equipment project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022/Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
You have first and a second. Director Service for the rationale, please.
Sure, thank you. This is another piece of snow removal equipment that the airport uses on a regular basis, again, to meet FAA requirements, to make sure that we're open during a snowstorm. This particular piece of equipment, this Airport 31, we often use this to clear the gate. So because we're an airport, we're open 24/7, our gates also have to be accessible by the fire department, by Hyannis Fire, if there were to be any incident at the airport. So this is a critical piece of equipment that our airport operations team often jumps into and helps the maintenance department to make sure that we're clear of snow and, and open and ready. So again, the estimate was in August of 2020, and it's based on recent replacements of like vehicles. Again, the vehicle would be eligible for 100% CARES Act funding reimbursement. That's all I have for rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Do we, Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and open for council discussion. Counselor Rapp Gressetti, please.
Katie, what, what's the $30,000 for design and permitting on this, on this vehicle? And in this vehicle, I know it's a 350, a board, it's 350. The other one was a Chevy 250, which was $57,000. This one's 115 total. And the other one, too, and I, I didn't bring it up, had a $2,000 design and permitting. What is that for?
So typically, we have to meet FAA requirements, especially if we're going after the use of grant funds. So the design and permitting has to make sure that it's meeting those requirements for Buy America and other requirements that the FAA has. Typically, what we do is we have our airport engineers that will design the vehicle for us, basically the specifications for what we're looking for. So they'll get the specifications ready for us. That's typically what it is. For this particular vehicle, it's a little bit different than the other one. It does have a lift gate on the back of it, so it's a little bit more of a robust vehicle versus the other one that I was requesting funding for.
It just seems kind of high for the, the spec to me.
I can look into that.
Keep those. Any other council discussion? Not seeing any, I would move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hullem.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapp Gressetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yeah.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
12 yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sticking with Counselor Shaughnessy, please. If you could read item number 2021-094, open the public hearing.
This is Old Business Public Hearing, roll call, majority, full council. This is item number 2021-094. Appropriation order in the amount of $165,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of airfield mowing equipment project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022/Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Second.
We have a, we have a first and a second, back to Director Service for a rationale. Katie, there? Are you muted?
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Not working.
Katie, do you want to try leave from the meeting and try to come back in? Sometimes that, okay.
Sarah, thank you for being our fearless technical leader.
Yep, I'll be right back. I have to go bring her back in.
Yes, thank you.
Can I, can I make one comment in the meantime?
Of course.
All these, all these pictures, this, this equipment is very well maintained.
It is.
You know, they look, they look in great shape to me, but I'm not looking under the hood, so.
I thought that was the new one. That's actually twenty years old, right?
I know. It does.
Wow.
Maybe they can keep that one around. I don't know.
Maybe their maintenance person from the airport can go and train some of the folks over at the schools.
Yeah.
Does he moonlight?
Right. They should have sprayed some dirt on them, you know? Looks like they polished the tires for the picture.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of armor off.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So this is for the replacement of our new Holland tractor. It's a twenty-one-year-old tractor. This type of tractor usually comes with a number of different attachments so that we can use it year-round. So it's not just used in the summertime for, for us to be able to cut the grass. It's also used for other purposes, whether it's cleaning brush, clearing our security fence of trees and growth along our security fence. So it has multiple uses. But it is used constantly, six hundred and thirty-nine acres. We have a lot of property to maintain. So this does meet the requirements for the F.A., FAA for safety area maintenance and clearing of those security fences. The estimate was gathered in two thousand and twenty based on recent replacements and it is eligible for a hundred percent CARES Act funding. That is all I have for rationale.
Thank you, Director Service. Sarah, are you back with us?
I am, and there's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Now, close the public comment and council discussion. Council Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to ask this before, but where, where does all the old stuff go?
So most of the old stuff, we either trade it in when we're getting a new piece of equipment. Sometimes we do find that there's other airports that can use that piece of equipment. We've actually had D.B.W. look at some of our older equipment before we've replaced it. So we kind of go through the gamut, see if we can get a good replacement value for, or if we can put it out as surplus property.
Nice, thank you.
Yep.
Somebody grab that tractor.
Any other council comments, questions? Not seeing any, I'll move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Absless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Shaughnessy, please, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine five, open the public hearing, please.
Thank you. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority full council. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine five appropriation order in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of snow removal equipment project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement plan as written.
You have a first and a second. Director Service for the rationale.
Sure, thank you. This is another piece of snow removal equipment. Again, it's a twenty-year-old piece of equipment that we'd like to replace. And I'd like to say that I know we've had a lot of snow removal equipment on the book today for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. A lot of these vehicles we held off on last year and in prior years. And because of CARES Act funding and the availability of that funding, we have moved them up to two thousand and twenty-two. If for some reason we get into a situation where we decide that we're not going to move forward, then we won't. Again, this is another piece of equipment that we do use on a regular basis for the access roads, for clearing of the access roads for entrances to the airport, as well as on our perimeter road that we use for our tenants and our airfield folk in operation and maintenance. Again, the estimate was based on dollars for two thousand and twenty on recent replacement cost and it would be available for a hundred percent CARES Act funding. That's all I have for rationale.
Thank you. Sarah, do we have anybody for public comment, please?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any council discussion? Council Rap Kersetti.
Thank you. Katie, how many miles on these vehicles? And I, I know that they've been well maintained. Must be harder, what's the maximum speed they're, they're allowed to get up to on the airport? Can they go over a certain mile, amount of miles per hour to kind of blow them out and keep them up?
So the answer to your question is twenty miles per hour on the airfield. Some of these vehicles do go off-site and they are used to go outside of the airfield, but most of the time they're on airfield. We do do a lot of maintenance on these pieces of equipment. We do use them for other, other uses in the summertime as well. They're not just snow removal equipment, but that, the bulk of what they're used for. You know, there, I will have to get you the mileage. I do have that information. I just don't have it available right now, but I can get that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other council discussion? You have my second page, not seeing any. I'll move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Absless.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Council Hebert has joined us. Can you hear me, Council Hebert? Did you want to chime in on this to yes or no vote?
I, I didn't hear the discussion, so I can't vote. Thank you.
No problem. Honored to welcome you back.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Katie, and thank you for the council for the vote. Moving on, Council Bogan, if you could help me. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine six, to open public hearing as well, please.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item twenty twenty-one dash zero nine six. This is old business requiring a two-thirds vote of the full council appropriation and loan order in the amount of five hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the purpose of funding the golf course turf maintenance equipment replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement plan as written.
Our second.
We have our first and our second, and I believe we have Director Madeline Nunez with us for the rationale.
There, I'm unmuted. Good evening, President Leveque, members of the town council. I'm proud to be with you tonight, joined by my colleagues Bruce McIntyre, Director of Golf, and Chris White, Director of Golf Maintenance. And we're here to request this funding of five hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars in support of the replacement of equipment and the acquisition of new equipment for Old Barnstable Fairgrounds Golf Course. So most of the equipment that we're replacing has, you know, seen past its useful lifespan. We're looking at some equipment that's, you know, past twenty years old and we really need to replace this equipment to ensure that we can continue to protect, you know, and maintain and upkeep the golf course. In addition, we're looking to acquire new equipment to help support our organic turf management initiative. So when you look at the five hundred and forty-five thousand dollar total cost, it's split between about four hundred and thirty thousand is replacement equipment and a hundred and fifteen is the acquisition of the new equipment. So the equipment we're looking at, it's the bunker rake, sweeper, sprayers, greens fairway, rough mowers. And our new equipment includes greens rollers, a three-hundred-gallon sprayer, cedar, a rake vac, utility vehicle, and a top dressing brush. So we expect that the replacement of this equipment will see us well into the future, for at least the next decade and beyond. And the Gulf Enterprise Fund will assume the estimated annual debt service of fifty-nine thousand dollars. So that's, that's it. And if you have any questions, I do have some pictures just to show you of the, sorry, I'm stuck here. I can't. So here you can see, you know, the condition of the existing equipment. It's seen better days. And the final slide, just some images of the equipment that we will be replacing and acquiring. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nunez. If you could just unshare the screen so I can
Yeah.
see everybody else.
Sorry, my computer's acting a little funky. There we go. Thank you.
First, it's, it is a public hearing, so I would like to ask, Sarah, is there any public comment?
There's no public at this time.
Okay. And I'd also like to welcome Chris White and Bruce McIntyre to our meeting as well. Thank you for sticking with us tonight. And is there council questions? Council Absler.
Do you have a itemized cost for each piece of equipment?
Yes, yes, we do.
Thank you.
If you want, we, we're happy to share that if you'd like it.
Oh, if you could, if you have it available real quick, that'd be great. Thank you.
I don't, I can't bring it up right this second, but we can send it to you, email it to you.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council staff.
So just a quick question, Mr. Nunez, is this a, it's a ten-year bond? Is it?
Yes.
Loan for ten years, okay. Now, is there, is there a replacement plan? They're all gonna, they're all, do they all last ten years and then we have to replace them all again, or hopefully?
I'll handle that. Bruce McIntyre, Director of Golf. Generally speaking, you know, you're looking at replacing the majority of mowing equipment with some peripheral equipment. There's no way we would come and say, we need to replace everything. We are in a constant cycle, but generally, it's, it's a five-to-seven-year rotational cycle between Hyannis Golf Course and Old Barnstable. Our goal is to always try to get ten years out of equipment. Some of the peripheral equipment off to the side, like the old sweeper that's well over twenty years old, it gets used seasonally, so it may last a lot longer. But, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could, could you remind us what the current state of the reserves are for this enterprise account?
Currently, our reserve, unless Mark Milne wants to pipe in, our reserve, I believe, is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars currently. And that was after taking close to three hundred and fifty thousand out last year to cover our deficit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments, questions? Council Neary.
Just a quick one. Bruce, I, I know that we've gone to organics. How, how are the courses standing up? I mean, I know it's early in the, in the season, the weeds come a little bit later, but.
Sure. The, as you well know, and I, I think I've tried to let everybody know, this is, this is a long-term transition. It doesn't happen in a year or two. We made great strides our first year and, and had a terrific plan to bring to you all last year. And of course, we all know that. So we, we kind of took a bye, a bye year. The, the plan's coming along nice. The equipment is going to go a long way to helping us down the road. We're looking at about a seventy-five to eighty percent reduction at this point in time, use of traditional chemicals in favor of biologicals and microbials and organics, et cetera. One of the, one of the things that needs to be understood is a, a good portion of the equipment. A lot of these protocols require multiple frequent applications of products on a more frequent basis than we were normally used to. So we really used the you-know-what out of our equipment in the last couple of years, so this will go a long way for us.
Great. Thank you very much, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Neary. Council Clark.
Thank you very much, President Leveque. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the golf staff for helping with the senior centers brown bag program when, when you weren't as busy. So I salute to you on that.
I, I think just about every staff member we had has taken place at some point. Our, our pleasure.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Council Clark. Any other council comments, questions? Thank you again for being with us. Director Nunez, Bruce McIntyre, Chris White. Thanks for all the work you do to keep our golf courses tip-top shape. And again, you know, you were, you were open when other things weren't able to be open, so.
Much appreciated.
Thank you for all the work over the past year during the pandemic. So without further ado, not seeing any of the council questions, we move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Absless.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
I'd be remiss
See you, Chris.
I'd be remiss not to mention, I appreciate Director Service sticking with us. I just wanted to thank you for an excellent presentation and thank you for bringing so many things to the forefront and utilizing the funds that have been available to you to benefit our airport. So I wanted to commend you on that, give you a round of applause in regards to all the work that you and Matt have done over there at the airport. Thank you very much. And the, and great presentation this evening as well, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, and thanks for sticking around. So I almost dumped the gun too quick and didn't give you the proper acknowledgement. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our next item, I'd like to welcome Chief Sonnen and also Deputy Chief Mark Cabral to join us for the, for the next item. And Council Bogan, if you could read the record. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine seven, open the public.
It would be my pleasure. This is a public hearing, roll call, majority, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item twenty twenty-one dash zero nine seven appropriation ordering amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Police Department radio replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six capital improvement plan as written.
First and a second, and Chief Sonnen and Deputy Chief Mark Cabral for the rationale.
Good evening, Mr. President. As Chief Sonnen, Barnstable Police Department, joined by Deputy Chief Mark Cabral. I'm going to speak to item number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine seven, located on pages seventy-two and seventy-three of the C.I.P. book. This project is in the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars in order to replace some personal portable handheld and vehicle-mounted radios for the Barnstable Police Department. There is a state offset to this, a grant-type program, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The actual cost to the town at the end of the program would be one hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I am not going to allow Deputy Chief Mark Cabral to speak to the details of this program.
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking the council and the town for supporting our radio infrastructure replacement project last year. That project went a long way to set up the backbone. This project's purpose is to upgrade the many portable, mobile, and desk radios that we use and to make them compatible with the state radio system. The state radio system is being converted to what they call a P-25 digital system, and it requires newer E-25 capable radio. Out of a total of two hundred and twenty-nine radios that the department owns, we need to replace a hundred and sixty. The remaining radios will only need a software upgrade, which is no cost under this grant program. Upon completion of this, we'll have a full complement of radios that should last us in excess of fifty. The police use multiple channels on the state system, as well as our own private system for our day-to-day operation. Without this upgrade, the majority of our radios would not be able to access the state channels, and we would not. The radios that require replacement are from the nineties and are no longer serviceable due to the age and parts availability. If we don't participate in this one-time state-funded grant program, the radios will still need to be upgraded to work in that system. It would cost the town an extra. It would cost the town in excess of $400,000 more dollars to replace the same necessary radios, the current state contract. I just want to add that this project has been coming, been told it's been coming year after year for over five years. And it's finally here. They're rolling it out in a three-year program. This fiscal year coming up, and what you're asking for will be year two of the project. I definitely want to get in and get the town of Barnstable care of. And I just wanted to stress that this is not a reimbursement grant. We are only asking for the $132,000, $136,000 that we need. We, no money would be going out more than that. If the program were to fall apart, we would not be.
Thank you. Sarah, do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Close the public hearing and move to any Council discussion questions. Thank you for the great rationale. Deputy Chief Cabral.
Spent some radio.
And not seeing any, oh, the star.
So are we approving the $487,000? We're not spending that.
We're, we're, it's partially a grant, so we have to approve the grant and we also have to approve the expenditure.
Spending all of it. Okay. Thank you.
The, the way this grant works is the state, so we deal with Motorola specifically. So these radios would cost upwards of $487,000. We pay Motorola directly up to the 132. State pays it directly.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other questions? I move to a vote please.
Counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yeah.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Johnnasty.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Thirteen yes. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go past 11 o'clock.
I move.
First and a second, can I have a roll call majority vote, please?
Counselors. Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Johnnasty.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Thirteen yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Bogan, one more item, please. Item number 2021-098, open the public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to open a public hearing on item 2021-098. This is old business requiring a two-thirds vote of the full council. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $806,432 for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Police Department facility improvement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022 fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and we have Director of DBW, Dan Santos, with us for the rationale. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. President and Town Counselors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. A police department facility was constructed 40 years ago in 1981. It's one of the most heavily used buildings in town. Facility is used 24/7, and as such, building elements are worn out and need to be replaced. This building will need to service Barnstable for many years into the future. The lobby is outdated and not secure. There's no ballistic protection separation protecting police dispatch and reception areas from the public. Hazardous material in the exterior masonry walls has bled through the old metal windows onto interior working surfaces. Mechanical equipment in the detective's wing is in need of replacement. The abandoned masonry chimney is failing and could collapse on the flat roof. The proposed work has been broken into four consecutive priority phases. Phase one is the interior environmental system. Phase two is security and safety. Phase three is operational improvements, and phase four is finished upgrades. This year's requests for phase one includes installation of a heat exchanger, ceiling-mounted unit ventilators, floor-mounted unit ventilator, floor-mounted fan coil units, the training room ERV unit, exhaust fan replacements, detective wing furnace replacements, AC condensing unit replacements, circulator pump replacements, two air purifier units, garage door replacements, associated floor finish replacements, and roof repairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Thank you very much. Sorry, Sarah, do we have anybody here for public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Close the public hearing. Counselor discussion, question? Counsel Rap Kersetti.
Thank you. I'm glad to see this, this before us because I've been in that facility. It's, it's really antiquated. It needs, needs some, some help. It's interesting that the design and permitting on an $800,000 job is about 11% in this item as opposed to the previous airport items where it was, you know, upwards of over 30% for design and permitting to spec a vehicle. So I don't know, I think you're getting a bargain who's ever designed and permitting this. But I, I'm absolutely going to support this rehab of this building. Absolutely.
I think we should give Architect Mark Mariancio what we should do.
Yes.
Because he doesn't get enough. Counselor Scott.
I was, I was wondering if anybody knows when the last time there was an energy audit done on the police department building?
I don't know. I'll ask Mark Mariancio. He may have that information.
Thank you.
Structures and Grounds does energy audits on all of our buildings, and there have been a number of updates on them with electric lighting and such. Whenever we do a mechanical upgrade, we can go and we review what we can get from like RISE Engineering or MassSafe for each one of those individual projects. I don't have the information exactly when the last time it was done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, not seeing any. I would move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Definitely yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Johnnasty.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Thirteen yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, if you could read into the record, item number 2021-099, and open the public hearing, please.
With pleasure. Thank you very much, President Levec. This is old business, opening a public hearing, recall, requiring a roll, roll call, two-thirds full council vote. Item number 2021-099 appropriation and loan order in the amount of $340,032 for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Police Department site security fence project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022 fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan.
Okay.
First and a second, and back to Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Thank you. This project will fund the design and installation of a chain-linked security fence and electronic gate around the rear parking and driveway areas of the Barnstable Police Department. The site currently is unsecured with no protection for police or employee vehicles. The work will include installation of an electronic gate at the Finney's Lane entrance. That concludes the rationale.
Thank you, Director Santos. Sarah, do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Close the public hearing. Counselor discussion. Vice President Schnep.
Is there any rationale for the need for this security fencing?
Chief Sonnen, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, Vice President. Yep. This has been a project we've been entertaining for a long time. As you know, if you've ever driven by our facility, there is no fence around the back lot of our station. We have civilian and officer staff using that building, using the back lot 24 hours a day, coming and going from work. There is no separation to prevent anybody from walking around, driving through our back lot, wandering around on foot back there. We do have several pieces of equipment that are high dollar value, not to mention just the safety of our personnel that are there. Recently, within the last week, we had an individual that drove into the back lot during our midnight shift, parked in a place where a camera could not see him, tried to get through our back door, was seen on camera. When officers went out to go talk to him, it turned out he was having mental health episode, and it comes specifically to the police station to get us to shoot him. So to prevent things like that from happening and getting people back there and having some tragedy happen, that's one of the reasons. Another reason is we do have an exit that goes out to the hotel. We have a shared exit that goes through the hotel. The people who stay at the hotel sometimes drive through our lot. You know, and in essence, our officers are allowed to drive to the back of their lot to get out. This is a kind of a safety issue for us, too. It's just things can happen, kids running around in that lot. We'd like to close that off. This project does allow for an option to be considered to have another exit out on 132. So therefore, we would not have to drive through the hotel and decrease their liability of having one of us hit somebody in their lot. And we don't have to have them driving through our lot as well. But again, it really just comes down to a safety issue where we've had numerous people in our back lot at the wrong time of day. Some well-meaning, some just thinking it's the front of the building, and others not quite so much. And I just think getting something done like this would increase the safety of the officers and staff that work in our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. Is there any sort of design? Is, is this going to look like a big security fence, or will it be kind of tasteful, but, you know, meet the purposes?
Well, it's a, it's a functional chain-linked fence.
Okay.
Not a whole lot of design that, that'll be involved in that. It's, it's intended to be secure and functional.
I just had a quick question. I think it's safe to say that most of the cost isn't necessarily going to come from the chain-linked fence, most of the cost. And in full disclosure, I was kind of privy to some conversations as a director of the Blue Coats that this could be a possibility of something that at that one point in time we could contribute to, but it wasn't feasible at the time. So my understanding that the gate is the biggest piece of the cost regards to this, you know, request. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Counselor Scott.
So in, in the, on the map that we've got, there, there, there's no drawing of an exit under 132. But so that, that's a possible, that's possible in the future. The, the exit into the hotel, will the, will there be a gate there?
Well, we intend to put a manual gate there. So if, if need be, it can be opened or closed as needed.
Okay. I know, I know that I've, I've driven by many times, so there's, there's not enough room in the back of that building just for your regular staff. People are parked on the ground, on the grass and the trees.
It's, we've had, it's pretty tight. We've had the deep, in fact, the, it's been expanded a little bit. There's been some gravel area included back there. And so we do get as much as we can out of it, but we are busting at this.
Yep. Yeah, you are. Okay. Thank you.
Any other Council questions, discussion?
Mr. President, Paul Hebert.
Yes, sir. Counsel Hebert.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. I think that this is way overdue. It's a, it's a wonderful safety for all the officers, for all the staff. And if people had too much easy access, I mean, they could do a lot of damage very quickly to some of our police cars. And so this is a long overdue safety improvement, and I totally approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Hebert. I would, I would marry your comment. It was long overdue to take care of our police officers. Any other Counselor comment, questions? Not seeing any. I move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snep.
Yes.
Johnnasty.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atslis.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Kersetti.
Yes.
Thirteen yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Sonnen, Deputy Chief Mark Cabral. Thank you for being with us tonight. And please tell your staff that, on the Council President and rest of the council, we appreciate you and we're here to support you. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. This is a strong message of support, and I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for all the work you do. Okay, moving, moving on to our next item. Counselor Clark, if you could please read into the record, item number 2021-100, open the public hearing, please.
Thank you very much, President Levec. This is old business, opening a public hearing, requiring a roll call majority vote of the full council. Item number 2021-100 appropriation order in the amount of $225,000 for the purpose of funding the Sandy Neck Beach Park parking lot relocation project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022 fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan.
Second.
First and a second, back to Director Santos, the rationale.
Thank you. This project will provide evaluation, design and permitting to stabilize and relocate the parking area in beach access roadway as well as an analysis and consideration of an appropriate off-site parking area with potential for shuttle service to the beach. The detailed analysis of the long-term viability of the Sandy Neck Beach parking and supporting facilities was completed as part of a grant from Coastal Zone Management in the fall of 2016. The analysis demonstrated that in order to provide protection of the built infrastructure, relocation of the parking area was the most viable alternative. In order to supplement the information contained in the report, this project will include evaluation of the feasibility of parking lot stabilization as a means of protecting existing assets, design and permitting of relocated facilities, as well as feasibility of environmentally suitable off-site areas for parking. Preparation of design and permitting documents will make the project better postured for any grant funding that may become available and will put the town in a position to act quickly should a future storm event result in damage to the parking lot. Without a long-term solution, the beach will continue to erode and continue to reduce the parking area and cause concern about the existing septic system and the use of the beach for public enjoyment. That concludes the rationale.
Thank you, Director Santos. Sarah, do we have any public comment, please?
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you, Director Poyah. I close the public hearing and I would open up the Council discussion. Any comments? Counselor comments or questions? Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I think this, this is an excellent program. I mean, it's, it's long overdue. This money is just for design, not for construction. We don't know what Sandy Neck year to year. We saw what, what's, what's going to happen. If we had a few big storms, we could lose half the parking lot and lose half our revenue for a whole season. So it's just basically, you know, having, having this work done and having it in our back pockets in case money comes through for infrastructure grants. Just in case we lose it all at once, we want to be able to act quickly. So thank, I think we should move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Scott. Counsel Rap Kersetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go on record that, you know, I'm all for putting money towards Sandy Neck, but I, I'm not in favor of retreating. I, I'd like to see us put money towards building up the beach and not retreating. We continue to retreat and then we'll lose pretty valuable asset. I think we should look at fortifying what we have there. So that's concerning. The, the other question I had is, I see this is priority two of two. What happened to priority one from Sandy Neck in this round? What was priority one?
Director Santos.
I, I'd have to ask.
I'd have to ask Derek to address that, or Nina, I don't know if she's here.
Director Lawson, would you have an answer to that question?
Yes, good evening. Derek Lawson, Director of Marine Environmental Affairs.
Welcome.
The number one was deferred, and I'm actually looking through the book right now to try to find that for you. If you could just give me a moment, maybe I can find that. And if I can't find that right now, I can definitely let you know here shortly.
I couldn't find it. I was just curious if two of two came forward. Why didn't one of two take the question?
Understood. I will get you that answer.
Okay.
In the meantime, Counsel Stein Hilber.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know this item got mistitled, so I appreciate bringing up the stabilization of the parking lot, that you'll be looking into that, you know, with this money as well. And I would agree with my fellow counselor that I'm not in support of retreating. It doesn't solve an issue. And the fact is that we haven't lost a piece of asphalt there for 42 years. And all the storms that have raged through, it just hasn't happened. So occasionally we do throw some sand up there. We did it this year. Last time, I think it's been three years since we've had to do that. So and I know over the last few years, there's been some great discussions about, you know, building up that parking lot to protect it, to protect our assets. It's a crown jewel there, to have that parking and the facilities there. So I'd like to see those ideas that, you know, first came in forward three or four years ago to have that included in this and, you know, protect that asset instead of giving up on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stein Hilber. Any other comments?
Mark Els.
Mark Els, Town Manager, please.
One of two was Sandy Neck, RV Trail and Gate House relocation. Director Santos, that was tabled because it was under review as part of a bigger look?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Not gone, it's just part of a bigger review of how we want to approach the fact that, you know, on both sides of what we recognize as a parking area and comfort station, we have the potential for flooding. That's a very dynamic area. And initially, I think we had a clear approach. And after discussion, we said, hey, let's look a little more closely. If you remember, I think it was last season, we had significant flooding of that gatehouse. There was, I think there was some discussion about rebuilding versus relocation. And because of that ongoing discussion, we are still under review of this, but we will bring this forward.
If I may, Mr. President, Mark, can you refer me on what page you found that on?
157.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Absler, please.
Thank you, President Levek. So I just want to make sure I understand this. So this $225,000. Are they looking at both options? The way this is worded, they're just looking at lot relocation. But my fellow counselors who brought up excellent points about not retreating and building it up, is this going to be taking that into consideration as an option as well? Or is it strictly for relocation that this design plan is going to be based on?
It is not strictly for relocation. What we need to do is develop a option, an engineered solution that could retain the parking lot. But the more important aspect of this is presenting that to the state and getting them to buy in on the approach. Quite honestly, there's not a lot of appetite for armoring coastal banks in Massachusetts. So we're probably fighting an uphill battle. But until we come up with an engineered solution and present it, we won't have the definitive answer. And so that is what we're going to undertake as part of this. However, as was stated earlier, I think it's important, and why we've been pursuing this, is that it's possible, given a storm, that a good portion of that parking lot could be wiped out. And we need to be ready, you know, at a moment's notice. Typically, these things are in the winter with nor'easters. If something did happen like that, that we'd have designs permitting available so that we could implement a solution immediately prior to a summer season.
Thank you.
Counselor, sorry. Vice President Shneff, then Counsel Star.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it is really important to realize that we're going to be having more storm events, not less. And that the proposal that we're considering tonight is to really look at a very realistic response that will preserve Sandy Neck for everyone for 50-plus years. So I think it would be short sighted for us to not move and improve this tonight. A lot of the funding to actually do the beach relocation, if that's what we decide to do, is going to be available from the state. So I don't think trucking in sand every year is really a great idea. And the potential, I mean, look at all the beach, look at all the parking lots across the Cape that have been lost in the last 10 years. I mean, this is a real possibility. I'm very much in support of this item.
Counsel Star, then Counsel.
Just one quick comment. There's, we don't have a choice about retreating. It's going to happen eventually.
Right.
So that's, you know, we've lost our source of sand from the Plymouth Cliffs. It comes to the canal and it goes out into Cape Cod Bay. We've seen it from Town Neck Beach and Sandwich. The sand's moving east, and it's going to keep moving and eroding that whole North Shore. So I think it's good to plan ahead. Thank you.
Counsel Neary.
This might be a topic at the time, but I know I had to reach out to Counsel Star. There's breakwaters that run all the way from Plymouth all the way down through Sandwich, and then they stop. And they get to Barnstable, and then they pick up again when you get down in Yarmouth and Harwich and Dennis. I'm just curious, is that, why were they allowed to be, you know, there's riprap, they've got all this kind of stuff there, but we don't have anything along that section of beach? Is that just something that? I don't know. Is it a protected area? Does anybody know?
Well, at a time in the past, that was a favorite solution for coastal containment of sand. With many decades of experience, been found that they really aren't effective. And so those aren't installed for that purpose any longer.
Interesting. Thank you. Learned something.
Counsel Clark?
Thank you very much, President Levek. Quick comment. Our neighbors in Sandwich made the front page with their houses falling in. So I do think that this is an option worth exploring. And the $225,000 would enable the Sandy Neck Park manager to park to, as you said, have a plan in the hip pocket should a catastrophic storm come. So I would support this.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Any other counsel comments, questions? Not seeing any? I'm going to vote, please.
Counselors? Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snep?
Yes.
Johnesty?
Yes.
Gar?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Absler?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Clark, please. One more item for yourself, 2021-0101. Open a public hearing, please.
Thank you very much, President Levek. This is old business, opening a public hearing, requiring a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. Item number 2021-101 appropriation and loan order in the amount of $375,000 for the purpose of funding the design of the Bismarck Park Bulkhead Improvements Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan.
Second.
First and the second, and back to you, Director Santos, the rationale.
Thank you. This project is for final design and permitting for the repair and replacement of the existing steel bulkhead and associated capping, adjacent walkways and parking, marine structures, and all affected utilities at the Bismarck Park Bulkhead, as well as to evaluate the possible reconfiguration of the piers. This harbor area is the hub of marine activity in the town of Barnstable. Considerable year-round commercial anglers use the bulkhead, recreational boaters use the many docking opportunities, and many thousands of tourists use the promenade to enjoy restaurants and the artist community. The bulkhead experienced a partial collapse in the 1990s, and repairs were made at that time that are now approaching the end of their useful life. A condition assessment completed in December 2018 recommended replacement of the bulkhead structure. Preliminary design and cost estimate was completed in June of 2019. Not properly repairing and replacing the bulkhead infrastructure could result in a failure that would disrupt business interests and tourist access at one of Barnstable's busiest marinas. That concludes the rationale.
Thank you, Director Santos. Sarah, do we have any public comment, please?
There's no public comment at this time.
Close the public hearing. Do we have any counsel comments? Counsel Star.
One quick question. So, Mr. Santos, are you going to raise the walkways at all or the capping on the steel bulkhead just to get it higher above the tide? Or is it going to stay the same level? Thank you.
Above the existing tide?
Yeah, just above. Are you going to raise it higher than it is? So it's...
I'm going to ask Town Engineer Griffin Bowden to respond to that question.
Welcome, Town Engineer Griffin Bowden.
Good evening, Griffin Bowden, Town Engineer. Yes, we are looking at accommodations for slide-in opportunities for future retrofits to raise the cap to accommodate sea level rise.
Yeah.
So we're incorporating potential retrofits for that, but otherwise the cap will be installed at the current elevation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counsel questions? Not seeing any? I'm going to vote, please.
Counselors? Neary?
Yes.
Snep?
Yes.
Johnesty?
Yes.
Gar?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Absler?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And just to give the counselors a little heads up, and the public who are watching a heads up, I would like to get to several more items. And so thank you for bringing with us. We are getting to the point where we will wrapping up this evening, but we want to get to more items. So with that being said, Counsel Star, do please read into the record, item number 2021-102, and open a public hearing, please.
Yes, yes, sir. This is 2021-102, opening a public hearing with a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council. So it's a loan order. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,550,000 for the purpose of funding a channel dredging program project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan.
Second.
First and the second, Director Santos, the rationale, please.
Okay. This project involves the ongoing design permitting and maintenance dredging of town-owned navigational channels. The town completed a comprehensive dredge plan in 2017 based on surveyed conditions and historic dredging frequencies. Plan identifies dredge needs in the 15 channels and basins during this five-year CIP cycle. Included are Barnstable Inner Harbor Channel, the Barnstable Outer Harbor Channel, Bismarck Park Pier Basin, Blis Point Boat Ramp Channel, Catuit Bay Embayment Channel, Catuit Bay Entrance Channel, Dead Neck Sampson's Island, East Bay Interbayment, Inner Embayment Channel, East Bay Entrance Channel, East Bay Outer Embayment Channel, Gateway Marina Channel, Lewis Bay Boat Ramp, West Bay Inner Harbor, inner, excuse me, West Bay Inner Entrance Channel and Outer Entrance Channel, and the West Bay Spur Channel. These channels provide important navigational access for significant numbers of recreational and commercial boats, as well as regulatory and emergency response vessels. Failure to maintain these channels can result in very dangerous conditions, which can threaten the safety of our residents and risk serious damage to boats in addition to impairing commercial and recreational activities. The comprehensive dredge plan that was completed in 2017, permitting of the comprehensive dredge plan is ongoing. The three-year project to dredge the Catuit Cut at Sampson's Island was completed in the winter of 2020, which was funded from a combination of state grants which totaled 1.8 million in town capital appropriations. Dredging of the Blis Point Boat Ramp Channel was also completed in the winter of 2020. Dredging of Barnstable Harbor Outer Entrance Channel is currently being permitted and is anticipated to be undertaken in the winter of 2021, 22. Dredging of the Barnstable Harbor Mid Entrance Channel, when necessary, will be undertaken utilizing existing funds. We have applied for Massachusetts dredging grant for these projects. This year's program includes the dredging of the West Bay Inner Entrance Channel, Upper Reach, design and permitting for the Bay Street Osterville Channel, as well as required comprehensive dredge permit sampling and analyses. That concludes the rationale.
Thank you, Director Santos. Sarah, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Close the public hearing. Counsel Rap Kersetti, counsel discussion.
I'm absolutely going to support this. These two areas are much needed, especially the West Bay Inner Entrance Channel. That's really, really getting shallow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rap Kersetti. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any? I would like to take a vote, please.
Counselors? Snep?
Yes.
Johnesty?
Yes.
Gar?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Absler?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Star, please read into the record, item number 2021-103. Open a public hearing, please.
One second. Thank you. This is 2021-103 appropriation and loan order in the amount of $310,000 for the purpose of funding the patrol vessel replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2026 capital improvement plan. There's a public hearing requiring a roll call, two-thirds vote of the full council.
Second.
First and the second, Director Santos, please.
I think Director Lawson is taking this one.
Okay, fair enough. Welcome, Director Lawson.
Thank you, Council President and the counselors. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the 2021-103 Harbor Master Patrol Vessel Replacement. This is a request for $310,000. The Harbor Master Division recently retired our 25-foot Boston Whaler, which was our workboat. It was structurally compromised and unsafe after use. Our current Harbor Master Patrol boat, 25-foot Parker, was retrofitted in fiscal year 19 and has become our new workboat. It is used to place and haul 208ths of navigation within the town of Barnstable water. NEA is requesting the funding for a purchase of a new sell-side patrol boat to replace the Parker. The justification, the Barnstable Harbor Master provides maritime law enforcement and public safety for over 100 miles of coastal shoreline. In 2020, the Harbor Master staff responded to 430 calls for service. This was an increase of approximately 300% compared to 2019. Examples of calls for service include vessels in distress, medical events at sea, personnel in the water, and vessels on fire. The Harbor Master staff works very closely with the Barnstable Police Department with some weekend boat patrols, including staff from both agencies. This new patrol vessel would be available for Barnstable Police Department, supporting law enforcement and emergency risk. supporting law enforcement and emergency response situations. Without a new sell-side patrol vessel, Harbor Master response to maritime emergencies will be limited and public safety will be compromised. Just a couple images to show the upper left is our retired vessel nineteen eighty-one. And the larger vessel is our Parker, which has now been retrofitted with a Davit, as you can see right here, to lift the heavy ground tackle chain and install the eights-to-navigation. That concludes my rationale.
Thank you, Director Lawson. Sarah, do we have any public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Counselor Discussion, comments, questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Raptor City, do you have your hand up? Oh, no? Okay, Counselor Shaughnessy.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is in regard to what you just recited about essentially rescues and whatnot being up three hundred percent. And in light of that, something that was brought up in this past year was a discussion of getting a lighter, more mobile vehicle that could be launched off of Sandy Neck. Any talk about budgeting for a jet ski or a sled?
Yes, there, there is talk about that. That is on the forefront. We are looking into that and potentially within the next year. That is something that we definitely want to do because response time from getting to our vessel that's in Barnstable Harbor out to Sandy Neck, it does take a bit too long. So we, yes, we do have to look into that.
Thank you.
Counselor, oh, I'm sorry, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a clarification. So the Parker boat still is, is still going to be in use. It's just been repurposed. And so now you just need a different boat for the, whatever that it does.
Yes, for the emergency response.
Emergency response, thank you.
Counselor Neary, please.
Derek, you're in the unenviable position right here on this thing. So you know what everybody says when the the brand-new Harbor Master boat drives by Sandy Neck? You know what I mean? It's like, what kind of boat, what kind of boat is, is backed out?
For this new vessel?
Yeah.
Yes, it would be a similar-sized boat, twenty-five enclosed boat. We have a foam collar, so we could come alongside other vessels and not have any issues. They would have a port and starboard cutout, so we could assist any person in the water onto the deck easier. You know, this vessel would come with a trailer, the engines.
So is it like a rib? Is it, is it like inflatable sides or is it, it's a custom boat?
No, it's a, it's a foam collar. One of the companies that we are looking at is a safe boat. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. They're pretty standard law enforcement, you know, patrol boat. Coast Guard operates them, Barnstable Sheriff, and a couple of the fire departments here in the town also have that similar type of boat.
I mean, I'm certainly going to vote for it. It's certainly needed. It's just that, like I said, the optic, you know, you kind of get, you end up being the brunt a little bit when, when you're out there and everybody's, you know, around town going, look at this fancy new boat out there. It won't look so fancy after a couple of years. It only lasts a period of time, you know?
I think that people are going to wonder how many, no.
Where does the Harbor Master keep his, keep the boat? Where's the boat stored at night?
Sure. That, the vessel would be stored over at Bismarck Park Marina. That, this vessel would patrol the south side. So it would go from, you know, Hyannis, Hyannis Port, through Centerville into the Three Bays area and even into Shoestring Bay. So this would be our main sell-side patrol boat.
Wow. Good, talk about dredging. Don't go too far up into Shoestring.
Okay. Any other counsel questions? Seeing any? Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atlas.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Polum.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes.
Raptor City.
Yes.
Kebert.
Yeah.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Star, item number twenty twenty-one dash one zero four, please open the public hearing.
This is a public hearing, roll call majority of the full council. Appropriation order in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Scudders Lane Boat Ramp Project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty, fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Get a first and a second. Director Lawson for the rationale.
This one's back to me, sorry to.
I just took a guess, you know?
Keep bouncing around.
A little wave, no, I'm just kidding.
So this project will fund the design and permitting to remove the existing asphalt boat ramp and replace with a concrete ramp, install additional stormwater structures, and resurface the parking area. The boat ramp is very old and the existing asphalt is approaching failure, creating both a safety hazard and restriction on use for the recreational official and commercial shellfisher persons who need access to Barnstable Harbor. Barnstable Public, Public Works has repaired the existing ramp to the best of its ability, but now it's time for replacement. Without undertaking this project in the near future, the ramp is at risk of complete failure, which could result in closure of the ramp, thus restricting access to important commercial shell fishing operations and recreational boating. Includes a rationale.
Thank you, Director Santos. Sarah, do we have any public comment, please?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, excellent. And we close the public hearing. Counselor Discussion, questions, please? Counselor Star?
Just, I want to speak in support of this. The, it's a heavily-used ramp by recreational fishermen. There's, this is where the town plants oysters on the north side. We have fifty aquaculture grants that bring in millions of dollars worth of oysters every year. And this is one of only two spots where they can get into the water, well, free, actually. So it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Star. Counselor Clark? I know you have something on this.
I, I was, I was deferring to Counselor Star. He's done a good job carrying the flag recently. He and I met with representatives from the Marine Environmental Affairs, the Shellfish Constable, Amy Croto, to bring attention to how unsafe this ramp is getting. Thank you for this opportunity to advocate for this.
You're welcome, Counselor Clark. Any other questions, comments? Without seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atlas.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Polum.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes.
Raptor City.
Yes.
Kebert.
Yeah.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neary. Item number twenty twenty-one dash one zero five. Could you read into the record, open a public hearing, please?
My pleasure. President, this is old business. Acquiring a public hearing and a roll call majority. Vote from the full council. It's item number twenty twenty-one dash one zero five. It's an appropriation order in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of funding the Marine and Environmental Affairs Building Interior Phase Three Project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Capital Improvement as written.
Second.
First and a second, and for the rationale, I'm going to say.
Thank you. This project is part of a multi-year, multi-phase project that started a number of years ago. Currently, the access ramp, front door, and interior foyer do not meet Americans with Disabilities ADA requirements. This project will provide for enhanced accessibility and make improvements to the front entrance of the building, including the foyer and front counter. Recent investments to improve the facility have consisted of replacement of the office and garage building HVAC system, roof replacement, installing a sewer connection, office renovation and expansion, and installation of an emergency generator. Future project will rehabilitate the ADA noncompliant restrooms. That concludes the rationale.
Sarah, do we have any public comment?
Not at this time.
Close the public hearing. Any counsel comments, questions? Not seeing any, I would move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atlas.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Polum.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes.
Raptor City.
Yes.
Kebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Thank you. At, at this moment, I wanted to take a motion to open and continue agenda items twenty twenty-one dash one zero six through twenty twenty-one dash one one nine and items number twenty twenty-one dash one two one through item number twenty twenty-one dash one two nine as written to individual public hearings to be held on each item at the town council meeting on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
No move.
No move.
Second.
First and a second. We have a vote, please.
Counselors. Atlas.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Polum.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes.
Raptor City.
Yes.
Kebert.
Yeah.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, thank you.
Thank you. My apologies to Director Machado and Director Noonan and anybody else who showed up. But those items, I just felt this was the right time of night to take a pause. We got through half of the items. I appreciate everybody's work, great questions, great input. And again, I appreciate everybody putting in the extra hours, extra time, rather I should say, when it was a late evening. So at this point, I wouldn't have taken a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
First and a second, roll call majority, vote, please.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Polum.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes, good night.
Raptor City.
Yes.
Kebert.
Left.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atlas.
Yes.
Twelve yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all your time.
Good work, all. Have a great night. Thank you. Happy Easter.